Well, good afternoon, everyone. So good to see you. Getting some smiles, indeed. It's so fun to just look out and see all the good work that's being done by you all around the school district. So we appreciate the work that you're doing. We will now call the work session for March 25th, 2025 to order. I'd like to again thank everyone for being here. Thank you to our staff who you're going to be accessible to us today. Really appreciate that to address any questions. We are humbled to serve alongside of you and the most highly educated and dedicated workforce in the nation. Just to set up our meeting today, I reached out to actually one of our school administrators. I'm like, hey, if I was to roam into one of your classrooms today, what would be the standard that's being worked on inside the classroom today? And he was responsive and basically we got the standard and benchmark from two classrooms today, fifth grade ELA and then a second grade math course. And this is what it states. You all probably know, you've probably got the benchmark memorized, but it's ELA dot five dot five dot one dot one. And it states analyze how setting events conflict and characterization contribute to the plot in a literary text. And then the next, which is 1.2, says, explain the development of a stated or implied theme or themes throughout a literary text. You just see that higher order of thinking. And again, this is in, you know, a fifth grade ELA course. And then here we have the second grade math benchmark that's in front of our students today as our teachers are working through this. And it says to explain the development of, or actually it's to interpret data represented with tally marks, tables, pictographs, or bar graphs, including solving addition and subtraction problems. That's our second grade class. So we're going to have an opportunity to look at a lot of graphs today and pictographs, infographics, and all those things. So we might need their wisdom with us. So again, I'd like to start our meeting by reading our who are we statement. We are the Polk County Leadership Governance Team. If we were to pick one phrase to define us, it would be student centered because when we come together to work, we lean on our diverse backgrounds and our experiences to ensure that our decisions are focused on providing a high quality education for all students. The four most important things to our governance team are operating with integrity, respecting our students, staff, families, and each other, establishing a culture where stakeholders feel valued, they're supported, and have opportunities for personal and professional growth. And then lastly, supporting an approach of continuous improvement to ensure student outcomes. And then collectively, we need to work on behalf of the children that we serve and find these avenues of agreement. There's definitely no acceptable alternative to that. We will always collaborate in a respectful manner in order to enhance the opportunities for each student and staff members. We're not going to disparage others. Our students will thrive because when we remain committed to supporting the whole child that happens, we hope and hope to engage and empower our students and stakeholders to create a community of lifelong learners. And at this time, I'd like to turn over our work session to Superintendent. Superintendent, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of staff, and any community members who are here with us today. Thank you very much for joining us. We have a pretty full agenda. However, one item will be abbreviated and I'll explain it when we get to that one. Our first topic for today is Polk County Public Schools Health Plan, the annual financial review and summary. So at this time, I'd like to bring up to the podium Ms. Linda King and Ms. Jackie Walker, and then Ms. Jenkins and others will be here to assist as needed.
Thank you Superintendent, Board Chair, and School Board Members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come up to you again and talk a little bit about this past year's financial performance. And this is Jackie Walker. She's with Wakeland Associates. Wakeland Associates has been performing our 1128 evaluation for a number of years now. And I think Jackie's been in front of us a couple of years ago, so Jackie.
Yes, thank you all for having me today. So yes, I'm Jackie Walker. I am a Senior Consulting Actuary with Wakeland Consulting Group. Under that role, I do certify the actuarial soundness of the plan on an annual basis and submit that certification to the Florida OIR. The Florida OIR is looking for two things. So first, that being the net assets of the plan as of the current year. So we need to make sure that the net assets of the current year are not negative. And then second, the rate structure of the plan going forward as we project claims and other expenses, that we can project that you will not get a negative surplus going forward. So as of now, we are seeing that the self-funded health plan for the current year and future projections is actuarially sound. So a few logistics regarding what the certification entails. It is due to the state 90 days after the plan year ends. So on your current plan year, that ending 12/31, you do need to file this by the end of this month, so not yet filed, but on the agenda, and requires a certification that we are willing to sign, me and myself and Allison Poole. So there is an annual approval process, so we will provide the certification and then they may have some back and forth questions regarding, for example, if you expect decreases in revenue, claims, et cetera. There might be some clarification questions as to the assumptions that guide that direction. Here, the actuary cannot certify the plan if the surplus balance falls below zero. As mentioned, you all should be good for the current year and hopefully with some adjustments going forward. And lastly, something to hit on here as well is that in some of these charts, we talk about the safety harbor or safe harbor. It's what the OIR considers to be a safe threshold of surplus within the fund. So technically, that safe surplus is 60 days worth of claims. If you do not have that 60 days worth of claims, then you do have to submit a letter saying that within the general fund, you have funds available to be able to take care of the deficit in the case that there is one. So just letting you all know that as of now, you do not quite hit the 60 day threshold as long as you have general funds available such that in a worst case scenario, you could give funds towards the health fund, usually that YFR will accept these terms. So keep all that in mind as we go through these tables.
So plan year '24 performance, you'll see in front of you as Jackie mentioned, and just to remind you, we ended the year of '23 at 15.5 million in reserves. And at that time, that was 42 days of claims. So if you recall, last year, we were also short of the 60 day reserve. And we have traditionally have been short in that in that area. We've not gotten to the point we've gotten 60 days of comfort level. And you'll see that as we go forward in the presentation. You'll see the expenses were up according to this compared to the revenue. And if you remember with revenue, revenue is really consisted of our premium structure. And to remind you, we have not increased premiums in six years. So you'll see that as we go forward also. There's an adjustment which basically Jackie can explain really what that is. It's basically truly an accounting adjustment. Overall change in surplus was 2.6 million to end balance at 18.1. The OIR 60 day safe harbor is 24 million, and so we have 44 days. So we did gain two days, okay, in surplus from '24. Okay, this just gives you, this illustrates your bar graph, Dr. Allen, that you were talking about. Could show this to our students, but this is where it goes from 2018 until 2024. What you see in the numbers scattered throughout there are all of the claims that were over 150,000 apiece, okay? So you'll see in 2022, we were up, and we were up again this year. What you have, the difference between '22 and '24, you also have some medical inflation. We can talk to you a little bit about that. The same service is not the same cost it was necessarily in '22. And you're also going to see that with the amount of the cost for the high cost claimants. Okay, here's your group insurance fund balance history, and I left everything on here back to 2016. So there's a lot of data here. So it does give you the plan year information, board contribution, revenue, expenses, gain or loss. So you'll see the losses there over the years as well as adjustments, which again are accounting adjustments. And then you'll see the balance we had at the end of that year and the 60 day requirement as well. So that's just an illustration to show you. And if you'll see with the plan years, if you notice on the board contribution in the past, we had a mid-year where we would accrue more, like July 1, we'd throw some extra money in the fund. So you'll see that throughout through 2023. Okay, paid claims over 150,000. Here's where you'll see the total amount paid for 2024. We had 98 high cost claims over 150,000. The total was 29.8 million. You'll see a star next to the 2 million. This is the first year we had stop loss reimbursement. Our deductible is 1.5 million per claim. So we did have a high severity, which you're going to have that in a in a group of our size, a large group. So we do plan for that with stop loss insurance, and that reimbursement has been reflected in the financial statements. So we've already received that check. It's already in the account. So you see the top five claimants there. You will see that until the third one, you know, they are higher than they were in the past. Average paid per claim also is pretty close to last year. It's 304,000. Okay, this is, this has pretty much been steady. When I come to you each year, I show you the expense distribution. 96% of our total expenses that are coming in go to direct cost of care, be it the actual claim expense or the clinic expense. So it's just a small amount, that difference of 4% that basically, it's actually 3.5% that goes to the ASO and admin fees, and the other would be staff costs on my team. Stop loss premium is a half percent of that expense. And we continue to buy that just because over the years, and we finally did cash in on it this year. So the concern is, you know, insulating the general fund from those high cost claimants. Okay, here's your premium history that you'll see. This year, we ended with 11,518 members, employee only coverage, and you're going to see the cost there for spouse or the amount, excuse me, of the enrollment, one child, two children. We have a seven tier rate structure, which is very different and unusual in the industry. Typically, you do three or four are most traditional. And you'll see the history prior to 2014, what that was. I didn't put the board contribution on here just because it did adjust mid-years, I mentioned on the other slide, so you'd have to go back to that slide to see the increase in board contribution. '24, '25, the cost was 959 per employee or 12,500 per year per employee. And then you'll see the deductions for the premium there. And that, those are monthly as well, just to give you an idea. Okay, plan projections, where are we? Actually, we're a little bit better than we were projected to be last year. We've kind of kicked the can down the road by a year. '26 is where we were projected to have deficit and have to make changes. We still are showing, even though we're showing a loss in '26, we're still going to project it at least to have 20 days in reserve at the end of '26. '25, you'll see, we're actually, you know, going to be about the same as this year, it looks like, 43 days in reserve and 19 million balance. '27 is where things change, okay? And obviously, this is looking down the road with just projections. In order to make us positive with even four days in reserve, premiums were reflected in there, additional contributions from employees. And to be honest, I have no idea if that's what will determine as a school board. Your committees will meet and make recommendations, but I can tell you that we're going to have to do some things different, and we've known that for some time. And just to kind of pivot on that, we are working on actually some, some actually some options for that, and we're exploring those options. And I plan on, it's too early right now to really provide a lot of detail. I've talked with Mr. Hyde about that, and we are working on it. We'll be bringing that to your committees for vetting and recommendations. And then at the same time, as we share it with those committees, we'll bring it to you as a board, just so you're there, it's your, you're involved, you also are informed about what those look like. So next steps, to be honest, I've still got to work, finish up the consultant. We're going to do an invitation to negotiate with that. We're very close on that and getting that ready and out the door and work on that to get a consultant appointed. Rx connections strategies, you know, were put into place this year. I will tell you that I'm surprised that so many people are taking advantage of international drug sourcing. So that's been, that will be one of those things that do save us some, some funding. And we're also, as I said, planning for 2026 and 2027 because the things that we are looking at are not necessarily just a one year, and some will take some time to, to implement as well. We will continue to have to look at involving and as part of that strategy, look at wellness programs and incentives as part of that. You know, the, the cost of our, of the care of our employees is very high, and we do want to provide incentives to keep people healthier. We do want to provide a way for people to stay healthy, and if they do have disease states, to be able to manage those, right? So that they are lower cost. And we'll be filing to the Office of Insurance, including our letter to the OIR, pledging basically the additional reserves we will need. And we're going to be 6.2 million short. And again, we haven't had to tap into that yet in the years I've been here, but it is a realistic, realistic reality for us if the claims come in as projected. Questions, comments for us?
Thank you Superintendent. You know, just noticing the, you know, crazy fluctuation of the claims over 150,000. I mean, what are the factors driving those?
Factors are degrees, disease progression. Obviously, you have cancers, you have cardiac situations. Every now and again, we get a preemie, you know, which, which those things are expected over a group of our size. And to be honest, we're no different from the other groups and the other school boards. They're all dealing with the cost of these disease states. You primarily, a lot of what you're looking at is the increase in pharmacy. And Jackie can talk a little bit about that, but all the new biologics that are coming out, we're trying to look at doing biosimilars and some other things, other strategies with our, our prescription consultant because that is where the highest medical inflation is right now. There's some really amazing things happening, but you also have to caveat with, you know, the cost of those treatments as well.
And then can you maybe elaborate on that $5.5 million adjustment that's helping to stabilize the plan?
Yes, so that's actually just more of a transfer of general funds. It's an adjustment, if I was recalling, to reimbursements and a transfer. So ultimately, our goal is to make sure that the final surplus aligns with your all's balance statement. We have to consider everything that's associated with the health fund as regarding revenue and expenses, but there are items that fall outside that realm. So that's what we're putting into the other adjustment, but still valid to get to your final balance, which is what's truly being held a surplus.
Yeah, okay, great. And then lastly, you know, the 2027 date, like where did that number come from? Why not 2026? I mean, what's, what's the thinking on that?
Obviously, we're going to be trying to make, to look at and talk with the union and looking with the Health Strategy Committee about some of the things we can be doing to help, you know, give employees excellent care, but also mitigate disease states and mitigate costs at the same time. So we're not really waiting till 2027, I guess is what I want to tell you. We've been, I've been working on it already for several months now. So we're not waiting until then to make a decision, but we do have to impact bargain every change we make. So the committee and your unions are represented on the Health Strategy Committee as well, so.
And keep in mind that in our projections, we are actually already building in a small bit of savings so that not going into 2025, we've been told that you all are expected savings on the pharmacy side. That's been built in. And then the downstream impacts of some of the programs that one described has also been built into 2027. So keep that in mind when you're looking at the big picture here, that we're already considering potentially four days of surplus by 2027. That's considering if all savings are met. So that's sort of the situation. I think potentially, you could move premium contributions up to 2026, but you all have seen fluctuations in profit year over year because a lot of this is driven by your large claimants. So you had a bad year this year. We have to trend that forward, using that year to, to project claims for future years. But if happenstance, you have a better year next year, not as many large claimants, this could be a different picture. So you have to keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, how does our plan performance compare to other districts?
Well, I will tell you, we have one of the richest plans, at least from my cohorts that I've looked at, at least as far as the others, and as far as the fact that we do offer a free rich health plan. A lot of our major districts are offering a silver or bronze, and employees have to buy up to the other option. So, so that has to be taken into account. And healthcare in Polk to, to date has been higher, to be honest, than Pinellas and Hillsborough. Now, we know we have new partners coming in, so we're hoping that if anything, that will drive down costs. Obviously, concern is that quality is maintained as well and that we get access to those specialties that we need. So it could bring in, hopefully, I'm hoping, better care overall for our employees and more options.
Indeed, yeah. And just, you know, I'll ditto that in a sense. We, you know, if we look at the 15 states within the coalition, we are number one in regards to the employer contribution to the plan out of all 15 districts surrounding. So thank you Superintendent, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Ms. Fields?
Thank you. We've been dealing with this for years. And I, I know that with the new healthcare provider, we're hoping that that's going to shift it in a positive way. We won't know that for a year.
Yeah, it will take some time. If you remember, anytime we had, when we went to Alabama the first year I was here, we were, we were shocked our claims were so low, but we think people were kind of waiting to treat or retreated before we changed. So it's really hard to predict when we're going to see those costs come in.
Correct. And, and I, I say it now, and I've said it before, and had conversations with Superintendent Hyde as well. At some point in time, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. And I know that many other board members either are no longer on the board or you currently might be sitting here. We're going to have to decide whether or not we're going to keep having a plan that is not sustaining itself and making contributions that we know that we're going to just be going in a circle every year. It's just a cycle, a vicious cycle. And determine whether or not we're going to either adjust the plan and make it not as, as glamorous as it is, if you want to use that word. It might not be the right word to use. And whether or not we're going to have our employees to make some type of contribution. I know some of you all don't want to do that, but the, the proof is right here in front of us. Look at the trend. Nothing is changing. If anything, it seems like it's getting worse, in my opinion. And at some point in time, we're going to have to do something. We just can't keep looking at it every year and then nothing comes of it.
Ms. Wyatt?
Thank you. I just want to confirm Superintendent Hyde, that $5.5 million was not budgeted for the transfer originally?
Heather, it was not.
That was done afterwards to, to make up for the shortfall. I have, I am, I'm.
However, it's budgeted a different way. We called it when we spoke about this. Linda?
I don't think that's the correct, sorry. I don't think that's the correct terminology because we didn't transfer money into.
Okay.
What Ms. Walker.
It's okay.
I'm starting to say Jackie. What Ms. Walker, what their team looks at is our accounting, we have our accounting books that we run, and then the insurance company, you have your billing, your claims, and then they reconcile the two. And what this number is, is it's a reconciliation because we take month to month and go through and make, make sure everything was recorded with the invoices, with the revenue. So that's what that number is. It's the true up when we did, not really an audit, but more like a review.
Let me clarify, because I think I know it, Ms. Wyatt and other board members are now questioning. Is that a true up of a surplus coming back to us, or is that a true up of additional cost to us?
It's a surplus.
No.
Okay. So it's not coming out of operating budgets, not coming out of our?
No.
Okay. Did that help, Ms. Wyatt?
I, I don't know that that's ever how it's been explained. It's been explained as the complete opposite before, so.
We can verify.
I think we probably need to verify that because I think that's, I don't know that that's 100% accurate. I was concerned at the comment made of it's, that it's too soon to start talking about some of these things because these things need to come before the board sooner rather than later. I will not approve changes to our plan again that happened after open enrollment. It has been a try, I don't know how many emails you all have gotten over the past several months, but I get at least one a day of somebody who's, has something no longer covered, and they did not know it. And on our plan, it says, new name, same plan. That is not true. So we need to have these conversations much sooner than we have been, but today is the time to stop, start talking about it, not six months from now.
Well, let me assure you that that's not the case, and I've saved my comments.
If you remember, anytime we had, when we went to Alabama the first year I was here, we were we were shocked our claims were so low, but we think people were kind of waiting to treat or treated before we changed. So it's really hard to predict when we're going to see those costs come in.
Correct. And and I I say it now, and I've said it before, and had conversations with Superintendent Hyde as well, at some point in time, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. And I know that many other board members either are no longer on the board, or you currently might be sitting here. We're going to have to decide whether or not we're going to keep having a plan that is not sustaining itself and making contributions that we know that we're going to just be going in a circle every year. It's just a cycle, a vicious cycle. And determine whether or not we're going to either adjust the plan and make it not as as glamorous as it is, if you want to use that word, it might not be the right word to use, and whether or not we're going to have our employees to make some type of contribution. I know some of you all don't want to do that, but the the proof is right here in front of us. Look at the trend. Nothing is changing. If anything, it seems like it's getting worse, in my opinion. And at some point in time, we're going to have to do something. We just can't keep looking at it every year, and then nothing comes of it.
Ms. Wyatt?
Thank you. I just want to confirm Superintendent Hyde, that 5.5 million dollars was not budgeted for the transfer originally?
Heather, it was not.
That was done afterwards to to make up for the shortfall. I have, I am, I'm
However, it's budgeted a different way. We called it when we spoke about this. Linda?
I don't think that's the correct, sorry. I don't think that's the correct terminology, because we didn't transfer money into it.
Okay.
What Ms. Walker
Walker.
I'm starting to say Jackie. What Ms. Walker, what their team looks at is our accounting, we have our accounting books that we run, and then the insurance company, you have your billing, your claims, and then they reconcile the two. And what this number is, is it's a reconciliation, because we take month to month and go through and make make sure everything was recorded with the invoices, with the revenue. So that's what that number is. It's the true up when we did, not really an audit, but more like a review.
Let me clarify, because I think I know it, Ms. Wyatt and other board members are now questioning. Is that a true up of a surplus coming back to us, or is that a true up of additional cost to us?
It's a surplus.
No.
Okay. So it's not coming out of operating budgets, not coming out of our?
No.
Okay. Did that help, Ms. Wyatt?
I don't know that that's ever how it's been explained. It's been explained as the complete opposite before, so.
We can verify.
I think we probably need to verify that, because I think that's, I don't know that that's 100% accurate. I was concerned at the comment made of it's, that it's too soon to start talking about some of these things, because these things need to come before the board sooner rather than later. I will not approve changes to our plan again that happened after open enrollment. It has been a try, I don't know how many emails you all have gotten over the past several months, but I get at least one a day of somebody who's has something no longer covered, and they did not know it. And on our plan, it says, new name, same plan. That is not true. So we need to have these conversations much sooner than we have been, but today is the time to stop, start talking about it, not six months from now.
Well, let me assure you that that's not the case, and I've saved my comments till all the board members had a chance to speak. So let me address a couple of things. You you know my position on this. I've been very clear and adamant that I will not continue to invest in an insurance plan that hemorrhages funds. This now puts us at 34 million dollars in four years that we've had to add to the insurance plan that directly, while it's a benefit that we provide our employees, you could make a strong argument that if we were more solvent in how we approach our insurance plan, those dollars could be better utilized with teacher salaries and other things that would go much further. So, and I believe that even Ms. Yocum, I'm not speaking for her, but she was quoted in the paper of saying, we're going to have to look at insurance, we're going to have to look at things. Because at the end of the day, if it means that teachers can receive additional compensation versus the insurance plan, you know, I think there's a reality to that, and I think that's what Ms. Fields and others, we've gotten at. So let me assure you this, these conversations are starting in April. They're not waiting six months. I simply asked Ms. King not to get ahead of the committees, because the superintendent's insurance committee is going to be charged with finding national, regional, and state averages for employee contributions. And then we'll specifically look at education as well, because we don't want to compare ourselves against some other entity or group of of employees. However, we have to look at that. That has to be explored. Much to Ms. King's point, that then becomes, if we reach some agreements on those or make a recommendation, then that becomes a bargainable issue that we have to address with P E A, ASME, and others. Beyond that, there is something that's in the works. We've had some initial meetings that quite honestly would bring us a considerable amount of savings, and yet maintain a very high quality process for us. We can't disclose that, because we're currently in discussions with these groups, but I can tell you this. Number one, the quality of care will be high, if not better than what we currently have. The cost share will be better. Our savings will be better. It will also significantly increase the number of clinic options for our employees, because right now, they're limited to two. And I believe that one of my own staff today spent, well, not one of my staff, but someone who I know of spent over an hour on the phone waiting to speak to someone at the clinic and couldn't get through. So we realize 14,000, 15,000 employees trying to get access to two employee clinics. Do the math, it does not work. So we realize those, but what I'd like to do for the board is, when it goes to the committee, the board will hear about it before the committee hears about it. So I believe it'll be a conversation, it'll be something I communicate to you as I normally do on a Friday update, but you will be looped in as to these conversations. But because it's so preliminary, and because there's some non-compete conversations going on, we have to be very careful on how we approach this. But I did ask Ms. King to make sure that that is one of the number one agenda items that both committees address in April. So we are not going to wait.
I just want to make sure that comes to us to vote on by August, September.
Ms. King, what is it I I directed you to make sure happens?
That the recommendations come here to be communicated and voted on.
In what timeline?
Very quickly.
But to allow at least a year
At least a year.
At least a year for us to make those transitions, so that we don't have these types of issues.
So if we're voting on it in August, September, then it would not go in effect until 2027?
Probably.
Probably, yes, because some of these things are more of a long term, and just the just the uptick is going to take time.
And I only say probably, because there may be a shared interest in doing one part of that faster, but we'll wait to see how we get there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Fields?
I think one of the things that we really need to be mindful of is, I don't know if I would call it a healthcare campaign, but a better way of communicating to our employees from the beginning up until the continuously, because I think that's one of the biggest challenges, is that the communication piece has not been as strong as it probably should have been. And it's with anything that's new, anything that's different. You have to let let the employees know what has changed and what's the same. And I just think that's a lot of the confusion. So whatever we do, I think we really need to roll it out where it's going to be very detailed and simple for every employee to understand.
And I think we learned some lessons, as Ms. King pointed out. This is the first whole transfer we've done in over 10 years of our insurance plan.
Actually, 20, 20 years considerably, yes.
So there are a lot of lessons learned, whereas, and many of you who did forward emails from employees about my prescriptions no longer covered, my physicians no longer in network, the vast majority of us, you know, have been resolved successfully. But that was a miscommunication between the companies that we're working with and a lack of coordination sometimes in getting all those physicians processed. Even I found that two of my four physicians were allegedly out of network, only to be told later on, no, we're still reviewing those, and then they ultimately were accepted. But we have to work through some of those. And so the lesson there would be, much to Ms. Wyatt's concern, and Ms. Fields and others who expressed this, we need a longer timeline for that transition, to have better communication, to allow employees to go in and look at what the change would mean for them. And if we can identify those issues much earlier on, before the change takes place, then we're all in a better place, because we can get those addressed before the transition. So we will provide a more adequate timeline, eight to 12 months, I think is more than sufficient for us to help our employees make those transitions. They did put together a video series, they've done other things, handbooks that they've put out to employees. So we learned a lot of lessons through this process that we will continue to repeat and expand upon, but all very valid points, very valid frustrations. We've all been dealing with those emails, and there's been a lot of pressure exerted on on Ms. King and her department to get these things done right, and they've been very responsive to date. So I do appreciate that part of it. Mr. Keys?
I just want to comment and and say that, from what I'm hearing, being new to the process, is that we've identified some shortfalls we had, but we're making efforts to get better. Is that what I'm hearing? That as we go through these processes, that we're going to give ourselves more time to not only make those decisions, but I think more importantly, communicate to the overall our employees that these are the changes coming down the pike, and here's how to handle those.
Yeah, this this will put us in a position where we can do town halls, we can do individual site visits, we can do all those things, which we did in some limited instances. But again, when we started to see a little bit of a surge in certain areas, that there were consistent concerns with, again, preauthorizations, medications, prescriptions, and more importantly, their physicians, retaining their physicians, which were the changes we committed to our employees, they would not have to deal with. And that was important to our board. When you first agreed to any changes was, we don't want this adversely impacting our employees. And so we remain committed to that, so we've been working through those processes. But again, lessons learned. Now we can develop better timelines, better tools, to ensure that if we make any big changes again in the near future, there would be a more adequate timeline. So we're taking note of all of the things that we have been doing or needed to do in a response, so we can do those proactively in the future.
And respectfully, I think that that we know in this particular industry that these things can sometimes be a moving target, as new technologies come out, and medications and so on, and formulators change it. But we're making sure that as those changes come, as they're fluid, that we communicate those effectively. So I'm satisfied with that.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins, you can stay. The 2023, 2004 A C F R report and audit findings are in. We'll bring Allyn and the rest of the team down. We have Mr. Arroyo, the Audit Supervisor with the State of Florida Auditor General. He did an exit meeting with myself, Dr. Allen, and the team. We got several commendations, and then several areas where repeat findings, but again, corrective action we put in place to help address some of those. And Allyn and the team have been incredibly responsive and worked to address those, so thank you. Mr. Arroyo, it's all yours.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Superintendent said, I'm Mark Arroyo, I'm the Audit Supervisor, the Lakeland Section of the Auditor General's Office. And here's a brief overview of the ACFR for the 23, 24 fiscal year. In accordance with Section 11.45 Florida statute, as Polk County District School Board's independent external auditor, we are engaged to conduct a financial and federal single audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, and for design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements that are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. Our audit objectives were to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole were free from material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error, and to issue an auditor's report that included our opinions. Our audit objectives were also to obtain reasonable assurance about whether material noncompliance with applicable federal awards requirements occurred, whether due to fraud or error, and to express an opinion on the district's compliance based on our audit. In doing so, we exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism throughout the audit. We identified and assessed the risks of material misstatement on the financial statements and material noncompliance with federal awards requirements, whether due to fraud or error, and designed and performed audit procedures responsive to those risks. We obtained an understanding of internal control relevant to the audit in order to design audit procedures that are appropriate in the circumstances, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of the district's internal control. We evaluated the appropriateness of accounting policies used and the reasonableness of significant accounting estimates made by management, as well as evaluations of the overall presentation of the financial statements and accompanying schedule of expenditure of federal awards. We concluded whether, in our judgment, there are conditions or events considered in the aggregate that raise substantial doubt about the district's ability to continue as a going concern for a reasonable period of time. We examined various transactions to determine whether they were executed in both manner and substance in accordance with governing provisions of laws, rules, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. We determined whether corrective actions were taken and findings included in the prior audit report. We assessed the reasonableness of the summary schedule of prior audit findings prepared by the district. We conducted our audit in accordance with the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. Applicable auditing standards are contained in the government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States, and Title II United States Code of Federal Regulations, Part 200 Uniform Administrative Requirements, Cost Principles, and Audit Requirements for the Federal Awards, also known as Uniform Guidance. Our audit disclosed that the basic financial statements of Polk County District School Board were presented fairly and in all material respects in accordance with the prescribed financial reporting standards. Our audit did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we consider to be material weaknesses. However, we noted a certain significant deficiency. Our finding number 2024-001, district, we determined that a significant deficiency that the district financial reporting procedures needed improvement to ensure that the financial statements are properly presented in the annual comprehensive financial report, or the ACFR, provided for audit. Specifically contrary to GAAP, district personnel did not report all deferred outflows related to pensions and erroneously recorded insurance claims expenses twice in the Internal Services Fund. The results of our tests disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that required to be reported under the government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. We audited the district's compliance with applicable federal awards requirements. The child nutrition cluster, the student, the student support and academic enrichment program, and the educational stabilization, educational stabilization fund, excuse me, were audited as major federal programs. The results of our audit indicated that the district materially complied with the requirements that could have a direct and material effect on each of those major federal programs. Any questions?
Would either one of you like to translate all that into English? Specifically, would you please, either you or Ms. Jenkins, address the nature of the findings a little bit more descriptively, and then also what what matters most to the board and to myself, as you know, is what corrective action? Because in our response, I'm pleased to see that they noted we've already taken the initiative this year to make the correction to the A F R reporting. So would you mind outlining that for them?
Good afternoon, board members. Allyn Nunez, the Senior Director of Accounting. To the findings that Mark explained, mentioned, one of the areas was a, the June 2024 claims invoice that was erroneously recorded twice for the month of June, was caught during the audit, and we subsequently reversed that entry to make sure it it lined up with the actuals for the fiscal year. We we always accrue back our claims when we receive the invoice, we always accrue them back to the prior month. That's always been our practice to help the Risk Management Department be able to track and properly report our expenditures in the month that they occur. In this case, we always receive our claims invoice in the, in the, for the month, in the, in the following month. We have one employee, her job is to accrue that back to the prior month while the accounts payable pays the invoice. Erroneously this time for the June claims, the invoice was booked to June, but also accrued back as it normally is. So we've already addressed this with the staff. We also are going to put in place for this fiscal year, and we we have the ability to lock the system down for any postings into the prior year, so we're going to be ensuring that we lock the system down. And that way, any staff in in accounting that needs to post something to the prior month needs to go through management and have a review by us. And then a limited time where we would open up the system, allow the posting, and then lock it back up to avoid something like that in the future.
And also the freeze
Yes, and and by doing that, it ended up increasing our ending fund balance in the Internal Service Fund.
Ms. Fields?
So if I'm understanding correctly, there were no material weaknesses, which is great, and the area of concern has been addressed.
Correct.
So overall, I would say, good job, because I know what what's involved in a very in-depth and detailed audit, so.
Staff did an amazing job, but I would also like to thank Mr. Castro and his team. I've had the pleasure of working with them over the last few years, and, you know, I know Ms. Wyatt was the chair at the time, too. So they're incredibly professional, they're they're very receptive, they're very transparent, they work very well with our team, and allow our team to address these things in a timely manner, because that's the goal, is in a system as large as ours, if we have an error, how do we work to address it? I think you've seen the staff have done a good job at being very quick to address this issue. Dr. Allen had the pleasure of sitting in on our exit interview and get to hear the bulk of this as well. But sometimes, you know, I joke about saying it in English, but for for many of us, you know, Mr. Keys is in the banking industry, you know, I don't know the background of everyone else at the at the dais, but I know sometimes I need this stuff explained to me in layman's terms, just so I have a better understanding. And I think it's important, too, since we record these meetings and broadcast them for the general public, that they have a better understanding of exactly what a finding was, and what we've done to address it, so it doesn't occur again. So I'm excited about that, because again, the rest of the report came back very, very strong, and I think it continues to show and build trust and credibility with our community that we manage our dollars very efficiently, as lean as we are. We manage them very efficiently and effectively. So thank you to the both of you and your teams, and thank you, Mr. Castro, appreciate you as well. I apologize. Mr. Keys?
No, just echoing what Mrs. Fields says, it sounds like these these findings were attributed to postings, right, and correcting those, and we did it very, very quickly and very efficiently. So kudos to you and your team, and we appreciate that, and I appreciate the transparency of doing that. I'm overall, I'm satisfied, and having dug into this area for the past six years, you guys do a stellar job, so I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. There are no, oh, Dr. Allen?
Just a minor. And again, you know, I was watching Mr. Keys of their nod, in a sense, as we were addressing the system changes that we've made and affirming that, so I appreciate the work. Remind me, you know, I didn't have my book with me today from when I took notes during that exit, but how long have you all been on site with us? Just as a reminder, because I forget the date on that.
Well, we conducted two audits during the course of the year that we were here. So we did an operational audit, and then this was the financial audit. I mean, we were here from about this time last year, we started putting out the feelers for the operational audit, and then it kind of cascaded into the financial audit that was completed and we released in February of last month, so.
Yep, indeed. So a long period of time. So again, I mean, I appreciate our staff, and just being in that exit conference, just hearing all the tactics that were done in in the implementation. I even recall, like, new language that we received in that meeting. I'm like, what does that word mean? And so anyway, I appreciate the work that we've done on this. So that's all I have, Superintendent.
Thank you, sir. I see no further questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Ms. Teresa Griffin and Mr. Chad Davis. They're here with updates to board policies.
Good afternoon, board members. Superintendent Hyde, we're just bringing back one, excuse me, one policy today. This is a policy that we presented on last month, and there were a few revisions to it. This is going to be brought for a public hearing in April. So we just wanted to address the revisions that, to this policy. So if you looked at the the policy that I attached, this is a brand new policy, it's our academic honesty policy. We talked about it last month when we talked about artificial intelligence, and it goes along with that policy. There was one line that we struck through that talked about strictly prohibiting the use of A I and natural language processing tools. So it just removes that sentence. It still goes into detail to talk It still goes into detail to talk about what things are and aren't allowed, and like we talked about before, there'll be more specific procedures dedicated to this, but it just removes that sentence that was kind of like definitive, saying it's strictly prohibited. And then we added in some additional language that Superintendent Hyde wanted to make sure was in there in regards to digital graphic and video production. So this is just an update to this policy. So when you see it for public hearing, because it's a new policy, it's going to be a clean policy, there's not going to be the green and red strike through. I only put the green and red strike through so you can see the difference between last month and this month for the sake of today's meeting, but it'll be, it's a completely new policy, so it's not like we're taking language out of an existing policy.
Mr. Sharpless?
Just wanted to say thank you for taking our suggestions from last work session and making some changes. I'd like the strike through and the addition, so I appreciate it, even though I know it's all a new policy, so.
Thank you.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah, again, I thought it was a great move as well, and, you know, the comments noted last time, let's not see this as a punitive, in a sense. So I think there's some really good bones here, and, you know, we all recognize this is going to be very fluid, right? This is technology that's just constantly changing, so I think the progress on this is good. And again, I'm looking forward to our next, I think, in two agenda items where we talk about some of the pilot initiatives, but this is conversation around the state, right? And even at the nation or national level as well. So I'm happy where this is. So thanks for adding that element about our digital technology areas, because it's in high usage. I mean, it's embedded within the software tools that have been improved within our peer list as well, like a lot of the Adobe applications have already integrated AI tools, and the expansiveness of that is just never-ending. So I see this as a good move in the right direction and look forward to just adapting as we move along in this conversation, so thank you.
There are no further questions or comments. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next up, Board members, we have Ms. Ann Everett, Senior Director, Office of Acceleration and Innovation, and she's here to talk to us about recruitment, employment, and retention of high-quality, diverse teachers, instructional leaders, and staff.
So good afternoon, Board members. Thank you for your time today. I want to start and just kind of say that it's always a treat to work on a project that involves so much collaboration with other district departments, and so this is a true collaborative effort from leadership with Mr. Hyde and Mr. Green, Chad Smith, our HR department, our Division of Schools with our regionals, finance, IT, public relations, our union and Ms. Yocum, as well as Polk State College and their leadership. So this is a true collaborative effort. And so today, I just really want to introduce to you the Teacher Apprenticeship Program, which is an additional pathway to help our paraprofessionals become teachers. And so there is statute and state rule that helps support this program. And in a nutshell, basically what it means is we have paraprofessionals, as long as they meet certain requirements, such as their AA degree with a cumulative 2.5 GPA, and you can kind of read down through the qualifications there. But they're selected, and they actually serve for all intents and purposes as a co-teacher with a mentor teacher in a classroom for two years. So they are a teacher, or they are a paraprofessional teacher apprentice, but they're really serving as a co-teacher in a classroom with a teacher, a master teacher, for two years. At the end of those two years, and well, throughout the two years, they're documenting competencies towards a bachelor's degree. And so they will upload different projects, artifacts, that support that they are learning teacher competencies under the guidance of that mentor teacher. Their last semester serves really as a teacher internship, if you will. So they kind of take more control of the classroom, they finish all of their competencies, they will have had to pass their exams, and at the end of those two years, after successfully completing all the requirements, they walk out with a bachelor's degree from Polk State College in elementary education with their ESOL endorsement and potentially a reading endorsement add-on. So it's a really great program for our paraprofessionals, and the whole time, it's on-the-job training. So they're actually being paid to do their job, but also document those competencies towards their masters, I'm sorry, towards their bachelor's degree. There are requirements for mentor teachers, you can kind of see those as well. They have to have at least five years' teaching experience, they have to have a highly effective VAM score. They also have to participate in clinical education supervision training to make sure that they're able to sponsor and support that apprentice. And then through that program, we have certain requirements as well, and so we have to make sure that we're providing opportunities to people that are qualified, right? We're going to support them. We have to have a job description that supports their role as a teacher apprentice, not necessarily that traditional paraprofessional as we may think about it. And then we help provide supervision and feedback to them as well. Polk State College, as the provider, they'll receive grant money from the state to actually pay for the, traditionally it would be like a credit, right? We're paying their tuition, but really, it's a competency-based program. So they're receiving funding from the state to pay the tuition for these mentor, I'm sorry, for the teacher apprentices. And then they actually document all those competencies, and then they sign off on that bachelor's degree at the end of that. And Mr. Hyde, one of his specifications was he wanted to make sure that we provided a bonus for those apprentices to remain on track. And so you can see the proposed apprentice bonuses if they remain on track with their study at the end of each semester. And then also, the state each year can choose to allocate, this will be the second year of the Teacher Apprentice Program across the state, there's a couple districts already starting this year, so we'll be in the second round, hopefully. We are still pending our final approval, but the state can allocate money for the mentor teacher to receive bonus money, and if they don't, then we would like to do that for those mentors. And then these are the next steps. So we have a job description that is drafted. I think we're in our final stages of that piece. We have an MOU that is going through the legal departments at Polk State and Polk County. We also have an MOU that's working its way, being drafted for our union as well. And then we're really just waiting on final approval, but pending that approval, we have every expectation that it will come through, we're going to go ahead and begin the marketing process to recruit our first group of 10 apprentices for our pilot program. Questions, comments?
Mr. Sharpless?
So I think it's a great program. We need to get more highly-qualified teachers into our classroom, and what better way than to grow our own? You know, they already know our system, they know our ways of doing business, so I think that's great. My question, so for the teacher-mentor, the bonus, you said if the state doesn't allocate that, then we will give them bonus from our, basically our funding. So first, I think that's critical. If the teachers, the mentor teachers are putting in the work to mentor as someone who, you know, who has done that before, not through this program, but through others, there's a lot of work involved in that. So I want to make sure that if, you know, if the state doesn't follow through with that, then we for sure will pick that up, and I'm glad to see it in here. And also, like, the keeping on track bonus as well for the apprentices, I think that's important. It gives them an incentive to not just start something, but to finish it, and then ultimately, our goal is to get them in the classroom as full-time teachers, right?
Yes, sir.
So I guess my question is, are the, going back to the teacher-mentor bonuses, is this, are these amounts similar to other districts, or how did we come up with this?
Yeah, so I believe, and I would have to defer to HR who actually drafted these pieces, but if I understand correctly, these are modeled after the other mentor bonuses that we've had in the past. They align with that process so that it's equivalent.
Right, thank you.
Great question.
Mr. Keys?
Well, thank you, Mr. Sharpless, for that, because you just asked some of my questions. But I will tell you that I'm absolutely thrilled about this, because coming from the, I guess, corporate world, I've found out that, you know, and not a knock to higher education for those that are involved in that, you know, I have graduate-level education as well, but experience on the job I find is a lot more effective sometimes than sitting in an instructional classroom, so. And then growing our own, we want the talent that we have here to stay here.
That's exactly right. And so the idea was, let's take the people that have already committed to Polk, and let's invest in them and keep them in these positions as well.
That's absolutely fabulous, and to me, it's getting those teachers, certified teachers in the classrooms we need so desperately. So I am really excited about this, and I'm hoping in the years to come, we start off with 10, that we see this program really blossom into something that we can kind of wave a banner saying, hey, look what we've done here successfully, and bring that into kind of an avenue to get more teachers, certified teachers in the classroom, and like, again, sounded like, you know, we're beating the set, but what better way than to grow our own, right? This is awesome.
Yeah, and potentially recruit paraprofessionals into our system as well, knowing that this opportunity exists.
That's a good point, exactly, exactly. So I appreciate you, and this is awesome.
Ms. Fields?
I think it's a great opportunity. The question that I have is about the marketing piece. We are now in April, and it's just a couple months before summer, so what are the strategies that we're going to have in place to make sure that this information is spread throughout and give everyone that wants to have an opportunity to, I guess, submit? I don't know what that's going to look like.
Yes, ma'am, that's a great question. And so let me also say that this hasn't been a last-minute type of project. We actually submitted our proposal to the state September 16th, I happened to look, and I email them quite regularly, asking for updates and what do we need, and we're really just pending that. And so we were kind of doing that slow walk of wanting to make sure that these opportunities we were, you know, providing to our paraprofessionals really came to fruition. And so we've been working with PR, they've branded it, we have Polk State reviewing that branding, but really, it's about an all-hands-on-deck, right? So we'll be working with PR on our side, PR in Polk State, and we'll be putting that information out through PR, through email, and soliciting those applications, and then working with Division of Schools, Mr. Green and the regional superintendents to select not only the administrators that have the capacity to really support these individuals, but the teachers, as you said, it's a lot of work when you mentor, and this is more than just mentoring, right? You're really teaching a teacher for two years. And so there's a lot of work to make sure that we have the capacity in the right places to support these oncoming teachers or these upcoming teachers. But it will be an all-hands-on-deck to kind of get the word out and to recruit, realizing that there's only 10 spots, right? They're going to be very precious, and we want to make sure that we find the right people, and that we also spread it across the district, right? That it's not in one pocket, it's across the district as well. And then once we have those people selected, we've already got tentative plans in place. Polk State's going to do an open house and kind of a big celebration with our leadership, where they really celebrate them as being Polk State students. And then in the fall, we'll do the same thing, right before school starts, we'll have a great celebration for them. Again, that'll be marketing for our next group of candidates, and that's where we will celebrate them becoming upcoming teachers, right? So Polk State's going to do the student side, backpack, student supplies, we're going to do the teacher piece, making sure they have teacher desks, all those things so that they're in the classroom as an equal. So that's kind of the post-marketing, if you will, but that will also be part of the marketing going forward, to make sure that all of our employees get that word, they know about it, they can plan for it and prepare themselves for the next group of applications. But it's going to be a fast run to that finish line. And one of the pieces as well, because we want to not only have them ready for the fall on our side, Polk State wants to do a boot camp with them in the summer to really begin to get those skills and those ideas and those thoughts and those theories with them, so as they enter that classroom, they can walk in as a confident co-teacher, not necessarily that assistant, if you will. But yeah, your point is well-made. We know we're at a very tight timeline.
It seems like you guys are on top of it, so that's great.
Well, and Ms. Fields, what Ms. Everett's been very kind not to disclose, so I'll tell on myself, was about two and a half, three months ago, I do attend the para evenings when we have trainings and support, and so there was a room full of pares, and I slipped and said that this was up and running at the time, and we had a lot of interested parties reaching out, and I had to be told to pump my brakes a bit, because we weren't there yet. We were trying to finalize our MOUs and whatnot. So there were a room, at least of 100 or something, pares that are very much aware of this.
We got the phone calls, yeah.
But, yeah, my enthusiasm, but what I have done...
And theirs as well, they were excited, so.
What I have done, and interesting, we just had the community meeting at Scenic Terrace, and one of the parents who was incredibly supportive of the relocation actually is a para educator for us at one of the high schools, and he wants to become a socialized teacher, so I spoke to him about this program. I mean, so all of us will be talking about this out there. It's frustrating to be limited to 10, but we want to have some initial success, we want to work through all the kinks, we want to make sure we get this up and running, we want to have 100% completion rate, but 10 becomes 20, becomes 40, becomes 50, and so I think very soon you'll see this up and running at full scale. But really, kudos to Ann Everett and her team and the partnership. I mean, she's incredibly collaborative, she's really taken this on with Carolyn Giroux and many others who are really excited about this. This absolutely, for many of our para educators, and part of the incentive, and we've been talking about this with PEA, how do we create tiers within positions so that people see the benefit of progressing towards something else? And so if we can create that here and use it as a model elsewhere, that would be fantastic, right? How do you progress from to be a custodian, to be a head custodian? How do you progress to be, you know, a food service worker to being a food manager? How do you progress from being a para educator to an instructor, from instructor to a principal? I mean, there are opportunities there that we can create and pipelines and incentivize employees along the way to do that like we're doing in our trades groups and other places. So it's exciting to have this, but thank you, Ann, for not tattling on me. But the message is out there, and it's growing, and Polk State's doing a good job of messaging this as well.
Yeah, they're super excited. They want to grow it as well, as you can imagine. They've got actually somebody dedicated to this project as well. Yeah.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah, I mean, we could have just ended that agenda item on that, so Superintendent Hyde, appreciate your passion around this as well. It just, it resonates with all of us. But I was going to just commend you, I mean, you probably have so much more you can speak to on this, and you're trying to keep within this timeframe, I'm sure, but with Ms. Field's question, I mean, you just started to unravel the details around this plan, so I really, first of all, appreciate your passion.
There's been a lot of work, and I will say, when I started and talked about the collaboration with the other departments, from IT to PR to legal, you name it, everybody's been involved, and that's what's made this really exciting. It's not from one direction, it is multidirectional, and everybody's on board, which is amazing.
Yeah, indeed. So we can see your passion and your innovation around this, so we really appreciate it. I'm like envisioning, okay, when they get to that two-year mark, right? How can we celebrate?
The next celebration, absolutely.
Right, indeed. And then, you know, my daughter, my oldest, 20, her best friend just moved into a para role, I'm like, I'm going to share this with her. But no, I mean, you know, looking even at our bargaining settlement, right, there's 16, over 1,600 para professionals in the school district, so we definitely have a large base to recruit from for this.
And who better to invest in?
Indeed, yeah, yeah. So thank you for the work on this.
Yes, sir.
There are no further questions or comments?
Thank you, everyone, have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Good job. Next up, we have Ms. Pascoe, who's going to give you an overview of some of the AI pilots that we are launching or in progress of finalizing.
Good afternoon, how is everyone? I would like to first thank you for moving so quickly. I'm meeting with SAP, working on a previous board project, and I had to run to get here, so thank you for making me sure I got my exercise in. So a couple things, you've talked, I believe, about the AI policies. I'm here, and we're going to talk a little bit high-level about defining AI. I think it's fair to say it's confusing. Fair statement? People say AI, and we don't really know what it means. So that's a challenge for us, it's a challenge for teachers, for students, for our public watching, so let's just spend a couple minutes really, really high-level unpacking three areas of it. First, got a question for you. Do you know when chalk was invented? This is going to be purposeful.
All right, Dr. Allen.
Chalk. Okay, prehistoric, I'll give you one. Do you know when the pencil was invented?
Well, it's the 16th century.
Do you know the year?
Well, I know the story of when pure...
Graphite was discovered, so, in the Lake District of England, right?
Very good, very, very good. You got it. All right. So I want you first to wrap your mind around this. You are a teacher. You're good, yes. See, boys and girls, teachers can ask students questions, and they can answer it correctly. Nice job. All right. So when teachers were first teaching with chalk, I want you to think about that. Could chalk be erased? Sure. We have a slate, and we're writing on chalk, and you just erase it. What do you think happened when all of a sudden we got a pencil and paper?
We invented erasers.
We invented erasers, but before that, we freaked out. This is documented in every historical book you'll ever see, every topic, because it was a massive change, and we didn't know how to address it. Because now, something that we could write and say, oh, I made a mistake, let me just erase it real back and put something else in, became permanent. So that concept is important when we apply it to AI. It's the same type of concept. When we look at these evolutionary changes for us, talking about technology, we have to rethink how we think about things. So first, we need to know a little bit about how it's built. So AI broadly categorized has three categories: machine learning, deep... So AI broadly categorized has three categories: machine learning, deep learning, and natural language, language processing. Dr. Allen, do you want me to quiz you on that too? I'm just kidding, we're going to keep going. Okay. Machine learning. So this is a lot of words here to say a couple of things. It uses algorithms. So that's a rule. So that's first important. AI is going to be based upon rules. And it's going to read data sets, it's going to categorize images together, it's going to analyze data for us, and it's going to predict price fluctuations. So all of these have patterns, true? If I showed you a picture and it was real fuzzy, and I said, describe for me this animal, based upon the outline, you probably could figure out who that animal is, right? Well, that's how you actually train AI. That's what they do, is they give them really fuzzy pictures, give the computers really fuzzy pictures, and they go through that and train on that to get more detailed. It's actually five pieces: the data, the raw material that comes in for the training, the algorithm, which is the brains of the machine, training, so constantly going back over and over and over it to refine your answer, prediction, okay, now I want you to predict what you see, we're going to refine this as we go through. And then an iterative process. An iterative means we learn. We do something, we learn, we build upon it. So speech recognition software. Speech has rules, it has concrete images, we can practice on that. Fraud detection, so patterns, believe it or not, they're patterns. I happen to be out of the country over spring break. When I got back, I have a standard meeting with my team. The first thing my systems operation person said to me is, were you in Jamaica over spring break? I was like, yes, did somebody see me? And he said, no, my team wanted to make sure, because we got a fraud alert, and we wanted to make sure that was actually your login. Okay, good to know. So self-driving assistance features, not going to lie, those scare me a little bit. But, you know, if you've got a car and it's doing some self-driving, it's based upon rules. So that makes sense. This has been around for a long time. AI was actually first coined at Dartmouth in 1956. So this is not new, it's just not a new topic we've really talked about a lot. The second type, broad category. Now, depending on what resource you use, you could get six categories, nine categories, so I'm just going really broad. Deep learning. So what's the difference here about deep learning and machine learning? Is deep learning is built on a network. So there's essentially three layers. There's an input layer, there's a data layer, and an output layer. So when you think about deep learning, you just need to think of it more complex than machine learning. Makes sense? So a chatbot. If you go in and you, anybody go on a website and all of a sudden this little box pops up at the bottom, hey, I'm Velma, your AI assistant, can I help you? Okay, that's a chatbot. We're really not talking to a person. The trick here is, for years, we thought we were talking to a person, but we weren't. Sometimes we were and sometimes we weren't, we didn't know. I see you have experiences, Mr. Keys. Yes. Facial recognition, lots of discussion about that. And this one's really scary, autonomous vehicles. These are, you know, the way of the future. I'm sitting in the back, yeah, Mr. Sharpless, I see you. Okay, you ever been in an autonomous vehicle before? Okay, yeah, you let me know how that goes. I don't know how I feel about that one. But that's what all of that is occurring. That's been around for a while, too. The one that everybody's talking about now is natural language processing. So natural language processing is hard, and it's difficult. Note, I want to show you at the bottom, generated by Microsoft Copilot and Bing. Okay? Now, why would I do that? One, to make a point, but two, Bing could write this a little better than I could. I'm okay to say that. My skill set isn't necessarily crafting board presentations or well-written emails, and I might need a little help. So how does the natural language processing work? What is, what occurs there? Because this is the key of what we want to think about. This is where I kind of have to have some glasses. It's doing all those things that machine learning did, except it's going to the next layer, where it's figuring out how the machine can do it itself. So in deep learning, we still are looking at data, we're still looking at an algorithm relying on these networks. We're looking at human intervention, so the human is driving this iterative process, but we're going much more complex. And then we're looking at all these levels. Natural language processing, there's no human. That's the scary part. Anybody ever remember Terminator? So it's scary, right? Because we're giving up some control. But essentially, what it's doing is it's taking this large database of data, whatever it is that was available to it. By the way, the internet's just a large database. And it's taking all of that data, and then it is learning and being trained on it, and then training itself to say, I did this, based upon this data, I came to this conclusion, this was wrong. Now I need to learn again, now I need to go here. And that can be a little scary. True? So that's what it is. Now, the question is, what are we going to do about it? So you've got a board policy, and we have some options. One option is, I'm not going to say these are all viable, but they're still options. One option is, we could just open up the floodgates and say, anybody do whatever you want. That would be a problem in pretty much any K-12 organization. We're all struggling with this, because we have a responsibility to educate students. So we can't just open up floodgates. Fair enough? And students depend on us to do that. They do. They, I, I'm a mom, I want to know that my student's grade means something. Students want to know that they had, as you all talked about, well-trained mentors, people who are from this community that want to teach, and they've got the right resources. Well, we don't know if they're the right resources if we just open up floodgates. So at Polk County, what we decided to do is to do three pilots. Now, we might add more, but they are going to be controlled pilots. And we want to do three, because we're really trying to hit multiple areas of discussion. The first one we're doing is a Microsoft Copilot AI pilot, that's a mouthful. Joe McNaughton, who is in the back of the room, I drew the short end of the straw. He told me I get to present, he gets to watch, right, Joe? No, he'll come up if we have questions and want to include him. So Joe McNaughton, from the teaching and learning side, will be bringing in people from the operational side. What they are doing is looking at our Microsoft tenant. So we have lots of data, OneDrive, SharePoint. There is an ability for us to use AI, for it to manage some of that data for us, and to do summaries, new content, reminders, automate processes. For instance, in preparing for today, one of my biggest frustrations was going back and finding the PowerPoint template in order to use. Anybody else have that problem? I just can't find my documents. AI can find the document for you. In order for it to do that, it has to be able to read the document. And we might have some that are sensitive and we don't want it to read. Fair statement? Okay, so first, we have to label those with sensitivity labels. And that's what the IT department, Joe's team, and some operational people have been working on, to prepare and look at six SharePoint sites and figure out that process. Once we do that, and we look at what's okay, what's not okay, what does it do, then we look at expanding that out. There also can be a cost to this, and that's important for me to talk about. One of the things that A, that Microsoft offers, Schoology offers, many people offer, is they offer chatbots that someone can come ask a question. But there's a financial cost. And the financial cost comes at either a full price or a per request price. So go back to that chatbot that Mr. Keys was kind of smiling about. Every request, which means I ask a question is a price, I give an answer is a price. And that's the footprint that's happening. So as an organization, we have to make some decisions about what our priorities are. So this is in the beginning of this. I suspect this will take us about six months before we can produce back what the information is and what that looks like. And this is a collaborative process to talk, to use Ms. Everett's words, where the superintendent is involved, we'll come back and talk with you, and everybody's looking at, what should we do? This is not a defined answer here. This is an investigation of what, what is available to us and what should we do. This, you want me to keep going, or do you all want to ask questions about each pilot as we go? Okay. The second one is an Amira learning pilot. The Amira learning is actually a platform. It is one that we, the name lost me, not Imagine Learning, it was iReady. It was iReady, it's turned into Amira now. And essentially, it allows the students, it does the same thing. They have all their curriculum, all their data, and they use natural language processing, that they can read all of that, and then the student can be, can prompt them with questions, and it can respond back. So this is going to be a pilot that's going to happen in '25, '26, and we are just at the infancy stage. So we're not ready to really tell you what this is going to look like, explain to people. But this is under the direction of Joe McNaughton and Victoria McKenzie, supported by the IT department. And we didn't really want to launch this until we had a policy. So that's why we're in the infancy stages of that one. That will be at the middle school level. Then, the pilot number three, one of the things that we really want to be able to address is, how do we teach students to use AI? Okay. As a teacher, my worst nightmare was, they're going to teach the students before they teach me. So who do we have to start with first? We're going to start with teachers. So Haynes City is involved with us, their IB program in a collaborative pilot. We will be spending the summer working together to talk about, what do we want to do, how do we want to do that? There are some conferences that the team will be going to, which includes the Haynes City IB administration, teachers if they so choose, and we'll be designing all of that. Then we'll be spending the fall, working with teachers, talking about, what does this need to look like? What is some of this? And then we'll move into the students in the spring. And then that will give us some ideas about how do we move forward. One of the things about AI that's interesting, I did an ethics and AI presentation with some students, actually the Lakeland Lead students, and it was fascinating. And here's the question, and this is what the students taught me. Ms. Pascoe, when you talk about ethics, ethics are personal. They're based upon our personal morals or religion, or how do I know the AI, what it's telling me, fits my ethics? I was like, that's the question. So those are things we want to unpack in a safe space, where we know that we're having collaborative conversations, then bringing information back to leadership so that the proper decisions can be made. So Mr. Hyde, that pretty much concludes where we are.
Dr. Allen?
Well, I don't even know what to ask at this point, but I wouldn't be the first one to talk. No, this is very exciting. Okay, so we, we pull all this data from these pilots, and we, we pull, and we start thinking about implications. I mean, what, what are you considering doing with this, and how do we deploy it? And before you answer that, I would just say, if you notice, board members in the board comments section today, I did include some documents, and these documents were collected from the most recent Florida School Board Association, our Board of Trustees, Board of Directors meeting. And Ms. Pascoe's name is all over those documents. So I commend her for sharing her knowledge across the state. It's going to have an impact, so thank you for doing that. So there, my question, yeah, implications, what will we do with it?
Okay, so this was my happy presentation. Here's my a little bit scared presentation. I just received a Florida cyber alert that there was an AI attack started January 29th, and it was aimed purposely at government agencies, because they're assuming that we don't have good cyber practices. Now, I haven't been able to unpack it and look at it, it didn't impact us, it's not volatile, but that's my big fear. You know, the more data we put out there, the more data we have, the more somebody can take. The more data we have out there, and the more profitable it looks for somebody to take it, the more they hold us hostage, because we can't get to our data and we can't do what we need to do. So we need to balance both sides of the fence, and we need to harden our network, which we've been doing. And I will admit, when I first got here, that was a real challenge. But I don't believe that that's a challenge for Polk County. I believe that that is one area, teachers, administrators, board, district, we're all united, that we want to protect our safe resources, which is our data, our students, our staff, the things that, that are important to us. So everybody's involved in that, and we continue to do that and continue to utilize those pieces that we can do to harden it. So that's what we're doing, we're always looking at that. And eventually, this will be part of the peer process. I mean, we have to look at that. When you come through the peer process, we have to weigh, where is our opportunity cost? And that's not an IT decision. IT is the facilitator for that. And then those decisions happen cross-collaboratively on the operational side or the instructional side, to decide where are we willing to take a calculated risk and where are we not. So that, that's kind of as Pollyanna as I can be about the things that really are scaring me. But I will tell you that, that scares everybody. It scares any IT person and probably scares most organizations, too. So we're all in it together.
Yep, indeed. So yeah, I appreciate the work on it. I mean, I, I think Mr. Murphy's over there probably pondering things on this one as well, from a law perspective. And just coming back from COSBA up in Atlanta, which is the national conference, session after session after session. Even, you know, to the point of the nuances of, okay, if we have a laptop, board members, and we've used AI, are the prompts that we're pushing into the machine, is that part of public record? And, you know, so I mean, there's just really good conversations around it. But again, to see it as an innovative tool, to make sure that we're, we're building sort of parameters, guardrails for students. So what they, you know, know what they can and can't do with these tools is important. So thank you.
Ms. Wyatt?
This is exciting, and I appreciate us realizing that risk is something we need to mitigate, not something we need to avoid completely. Because there's, there are always going to be risks, but there are so many benefits to AI and being able to utilize it for good, that I appreciate giving our students the opportunity to do that. That being said, I know many of our students are already using AI, whether or not we want to believe it. As we look at some of the pilot programs, while pilot programs are running, are we offering any type of support to teachers or staff that are wanting to allow students to utilize it, whether it's in research for their papers or things like that? I know, like, for example, at SEU, basically, you just have to cite, this is what I did, and, and attach the transcript of this is where it came from. Are we doing anything like that in the meantime, or are we just telling them they can't use it until the pilot hits their school?
Well, that's a, a kind of a complicated question. So AI is not open on our devices. And that's for a reason, because we didn't have a policy, we aren't using it, and again, I can't have the Wild Wild West. But let's also unpack it a little bit. Cheating is cheating. Documenting your resources is documenting your resources. Let's go back for a minute. I, I did not use, true statement, I didn't go through and use the AMA format or whatever, but I gave credit to where this was, correct? That is the same foundational expectation any teacher has. If you're going to use resources that are not yours, you must give credit to those resources, no matter where you got it. So those are important things that I am confident teachers are doing. And I can't really speak to the support that's being given to them, because that's not coming from the IT department. But what I can speak for is, I do know the Curriculum Department, and I know the Division of Schools spends a lot of time talking with teachers about that. How do you cite your resources? What are we doing? What does it mean to be ethical? So I do believe that is still happening. If students are using AI, they're using them on their personal devices, they're not using them on ours, and, and they're not using them at school. That's the same thing as, you know, hate to say it, but had my son one time in the car, and there were four other kids, and I, all of a sudden, it got real quiet, I was like, what are you doing? They're like, we're copying each other's papers. I was like, you can't do that, that's cheating. And so it, it, it's the same concept, it just scares us, because it's a whole brand-new thing. So yes, there's, there's the same supports that have been given consistently through all of that. And that's part of that Haynes City IB pilot, is if we're going to allow this here, what does that look like? What support do we need? Where do we need to go? And that's part of, you know, I really liked Ms. Everett's words of, it's the slow walk. We, we need to do a little bit of a slow walk to make sure we're making the right decisions. And then, because I'm confident, once we open it, the floodgates will open. I don't know if I totally answered your question or not.
Mr. Keys?
Let me just say that I am glad that you are on the task, because I take it as, this is such a bad analogy. You, you walk around it, and you kind of look at it a few times, and then before you reach out and touch it, you want to walk around another time. Thank you so much for your cautiousness, because while this is scary, I can tell you, on the banking industry side, we've jumped in full bore on AI and seen what it can do for us. And the implications from a fraud standpoint and customer data is, is a big concern. And it's kind of, it mimics what we're doing here, too, is protecting student data and district data. So again, I thank you so much for your cautiousness, and we're going to get there, right? And it's going to be an, an excellent tool to use. We used it this summer in, in banking school to do kind of a presentation. And the things that it came up with were absolutely amazing, something, things that I never would have thought of. What a powerful tool, but something that we need to be responsible with using. So thank you again for, for making sure that we kind of do, do, do our due diligence before we jump into it full bore. Thank you.
You're welcome, for sure, but that is my obligation. Part of my job is, to Ms. Wyatt's point, mitigating risk. And the way I mitigate risk is, we're going to do as much as I know I can walk us back. If I can't walk us back, then I got to make sure I can walk us back. Because you, once you get past that point, then you just can't. We don't want that to happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There are no further questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, I'm going to ask, do you need a break after this next item? Okay. So knowing that this next item will be relatively quick, I'm going to bring Mr. Joshua McLemore, Director of Facilities Planning and Real Estate, Mr. Fix, I believe, is in the audience, or I thought he, there he is. He's also available. This is the Addison Four Corners Apartment Mitigation Agreement. Josh, before you begin, just go ahead and let the technology team in, in, in the other room know that following this item, we will take a short recess. So, Mr. McLemore?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent-
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent. Again, this item before you, this afternoon, is the work session item for a mitigation agreement that has come to our office from a developer that is seeking to secure binding school concurrency for a development that is located in the northeast part of Polk County. The project itself is a 259 apartment unit development. To give you a rough bearing of where it's located, on the slide in front of you, if you see those ball fields on the right side of the screen, that is the Polk County Four Corners Regional Park. So again, this is an area that has seen massive residential growth. However, this is also one of the last few vacant parcels left anywhere along US 27 north of I-4. So this parcel is getting proposed for development. Long story short, this applicant first came to our office trying to achieve binding school concurrency in December, after we did our analysis based off of student enrollment analysis. They were deficient, eight student stations, which again, we give them that option of, okay, you can either wait and see if capacity becomes available later on, or you can enter this, go down this avenue of entering into a binding mitigation agreement, which is what this developer has sought to do. Long story short, in terms of cost figures associated with this, the developer is only paying for what they are deficient. They're not paying everything that they are going to be required, because, let me unpack that a little bit more. They're still going to have to pay educational impact fees. They are only just going to have to pay what they are deficient sooner than what they would already do on the back end when they pull building permits. And at this time, they're deficient, eight student stations, so that comes to a grand toll of $228,648. And how we arrive at that figure is, if you look in that bottom table, cost of student station, the Department of Education facilities up on the state level, they have a matrix table that they publish every year, and they generate what a cost of student station is at each level, elementary, middle, and high, and those tables get updated every year. So we use that data to use as our, how we generate the total costs. And one clarification here, up on the top, you can see where I have today's board shop date. However, this is not coming back-to-back. This will not come to the board meeting for final adoption. This will come back in April, and working with Mr. Murphy, where there are some items we need to address in terms of the actual agreement itself, just to make sure we have it all cleaned up properly. Pending your questions.
I see no questions or comments. Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Thank you, Mr. Fix. Board members, will we take a 15-minute recess? Is that sufficient? I see head nodding. So for the tech team, please put the clock on 15 minutes. Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order, and appreciate the little brief break there for us to collect our thoughts. It's been a great work session thus far, so Superintendent, I'll pass it back your way.
So again, I'm going to introduce Mr. Josh McLemore and Mr. Harry Fix. They have a second item on today, the Massey Road, City of Haynes City Resolution.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Hyde. So this makes my-
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, Board Member Superintendent Hyde. Uh, so this next ma- this next item that we're going to be discussing, I'm going to try to really summarize it and keep it very straightforward and simple. Um, but really what this amounts to is pretty much following up on a right-of-way dedication that this board approved uh, back in January twenty-five, uh, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, and, and at that time, the board agreed to dedicate some, uh, right-of-way off of property that the district owned. And the area that we're talking about is located up in the northeast part of Polk County. Our property is located just west of US twenty-seven, south of I four, along Massey Road, near the, uh, actually at the intersection of FDC Grove Road and Massey Road. Those who are familiar with that road, that road takes a weird bend as it, uh, circumnavigates around a, uh, wetland area. And that's actually the area in question, though some of the right-of-way dedication occurred. Say all that to say, uh, in addition to actually doing, signing the warranty deed and a right-of-way dedication, um, it came back on, uh, review of title that also needs to have a resolution appro- uh, approved by this board, uh, to actually follow through with the actual final, uh, dedication of right-of-way. And with that, if there's any more, I may have to lean on Mr. Murphy to fill in the gaps on this.
I see no questions or comments.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 Yes, correct.
Board members, the next item is just going to be very brief. Uh, it's actually going to come back to you on April eighth. They, based off some follow-up conversation with the providers and others who have submitted. Um, as you know, we have a vacant early childhood learning center on the campus. It's a dedicated site. Um, it's been vacant for some years, I believe seven or more years. So we had recently reached out to the ELC, identified several high-profile, high-performing providers. I provided you the definition of what qualified them as high-quality providers. We invited them to submit applications, uh, or an interest letter, um, based off the availability of space. We had several, um, who were interested, three who ultimately submitted their applications. I want to thank Ms. Wyatt. I want to thank, uh, Conchera Adams, Lori Allen, and Carrie Barkin, who, Barkman, excuse me, who all assisted us with interviewing each one of the three candidates. We then looked at their submissions. We looked at their written responses. We took into consideration their, their in-person responses. And ultimately, we ranked prioritized them. We did select one overarching candidate. It was very close. Um, please keep in mind that there will be other opportunities within Polk County as we can, again, as we continue to look to maximize our current occupancy and utilization of our, of our, of our school spaces. Um, and so this was one good example of how we provide a better ROI and a great partnership where, you know, we already have the operational costs to sustain and maintain that building. If someone else can come in and eliminate those costs from their overall budget, it provides a better price point for parents. Um, there's a set aside requirement in there for staff. And so staff can apply and it'd be a lottery base, so it's more of cost affordable, but it creates some opportunities for our staff. Um, I think it's a great model for us to consider. We'll see how this works out. So we do have a final candidate. They're being notified. And then they will enter into contractual agreements or discussion with us. Um, if they are successful and we reach an agreement, then I will bring that back before the board, before the end of the school year. Hopefully, we can get that done in the next month or so. Um, outside of that, if we reach a place where maybe the provider says we're not, we're not comfortable with that requirement, um, there's an understanding in the letter that's being sent to each of them that, then it moves on to the next highest score. Um, and so there's great opportunities here for us. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a background, give you an update. I didn't know if Ms. Wyatt wanted to contribute. I do see her, she raised her hand here. Um, but I think the process was good. I thought it was very thorough. And the submissions, we had some great, great, great providers come to the table. Each had their own strengths. And none had weaknesses or deficiencies, but some just really, really hit a home run during their presentation. So, Ms. Wyatt.
Thank you.
Yes, it was, it was extremely impressive, each of the, the candidates that submitted, um, from their presentations to their written questions, um, written responses to their questions. They, they know their stuff and they're, they're all well-equipped to serve our students. I'm excited, um, for the top selection, but also excited that it sounds like there will be other opportunities for, um, the other two candidates as well. I did have a question with the shift in timeline. It, it wouldn't be able to come back until April twenty-second? How does that affect, because this is something we're looking to launch in August. How does that affect?
I believe we have a workshop April eighth. I can ask for consensus support there. We'll start the contract negotiation and then hopefully if we can have that wrapped up by late April, early May, we'll be able to do that. Um, we will include the adjusted timeline with the providers so that they understand. Uh, we will not put them under the gun to basically have to start or rush to start. We want them to staff adequately and appropriately. But there are some things we have to work out with them as far as FF and E. Uh, but all have agreed. They know they have to use Raptor. They know we have to have access to the CCTV, the security systems, those types of things. So there's just, I think the majority of issues have been resolved, other than the price point, the calendar year that they will follow. Some have indicated they might be year-round. Others have indicated they would follow more of a traditional school schedule. Um, but we'll, we'll have to iron those details out over the next month.
Thank you. I would encourage us to do everything on our end we can to have it brought back to sign up for us to sign off on on the twenty-second.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just be, for planning purposes, I want to make sure that they can start with, for families with the school year.
We're, we're essentially going to model it after a traditional charter school application and just modify it to suit this specific purpose.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Fields.
I just wanted to know, maybe I missed it. Are we going to have an opportunity to know who the provider is?
Yes, ma'am. I will provide that to you.
The ones that competed as well?
Yes, ma- well, you received all packets for all three applicants previously. Um, and I will apprise the board. Once the letters get finalized and sent out, I plan on sending those out this evening. I will copy the board on those letters.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Sharpless.
That was going to be my question. If we could see, um, you know, how they have, we got, we got the rubric, we got everything, and we just could see how they performed. I'm just curious. Or, or just some over, like this is selected for this reason. I don't know.
Well, I can, I can just basically tell you that rank prioritized, the, the committee reached consensus as far as the top number one, two, and three.
Gotcha.
Um, the point sheet, I'm happy to share the point sheet and their written responses. The thing is, it often gets miscommunicated or misconstrued sometimes, is that the point sheet is not the final indicator of who gets selected. Sometimes that gets misconstrued a lot during interview process. It's one of three components that we review, um, in their totality. Now, in this case, I believe it actually worked out in favor of the top three and how they ended up ranked. But I just don't, I want to put it out there on the record that that's not.
I, I want to.
Don't want to mislead anyone.
I want to rephrase that. I just, I basically would, would like to know, like, from the consensus of the group, you know, we went, we decided to rank this overall first because X, Y, Z. Just in case any community people are asking me, well, why was this person selected? I can be knowledgeable.
It'll be in the letter.
Okay.
The letter summarizes, you were selected based off the following.
All right, thank you.
No further questions or comments on that item. Next item is the additional millage levy for school operating use. Um, I'm listed as a contact, however, I'm going to defer to Mr. Murphy. Uh, Mr. Murphy and his team developed this refer, this, um, this language, and I asked the board to go ahead and make sure that you reviewed it. Um, I did get some commentary from Ms. Miller because she's unable to be with us today, um, and her questions and comments, so I was able to address those. Uh, primarily, she asked about the board's, you know, the, the term, that she would be supportive of a four-year term. Um, she also asked some questions about, um, communication, partnerships, those types of things, all of which I had to share that would not be finalized until such time as the board basically took some action to, to indicate that we need to move forward. So I'll, I'll open it up to any comments or questions, um, that you may have. Ms. Fields.
I don't have any comments, but I was wondering if Mr. Murphy could give us a very short summarization. Please.
Certainly. And I have with me my law partner Drew Crawford, who, uh, was largely, um, in conjunction with me, worked on the memo that's before you. What this does, Board Member Fields, is it provides to the board a schedule of times of, you know, calendar-wise, uh, jiving it with the Florida statutes and with the Board of County Commissioners' practice. In terms of when do you have to have the resolution to, in the ballot language, to the Board of County Commissioners so that it can be placed on the next available ballot, which would be November of two thousand and twenty-six. The other, uh, information, it really is going to require work on the school board in conjunction with the superintendent and his professional staff to, uh, enlighten the board on, number one, how much of a millage do you want to, you know, ask the voters to approve? We've provided you some information on what other districts have done. It varies from point five to one mil. Um, probably more commonly, it's one mil, I would say. Um, and that, we also need to come up with a methodology or some plan of how we're going to use those, those funds so that can be demonstrated to the electorate and to the voters, frankly. What, you know, what, what are they doing? What are they voting on? Um, how are you going to use that money? And it's more often than not used for operating, uh, expenses. And in part, perhaps even large part, it can be used to fund, uh, even things as salaries. Uh, and so that, and then the other thing that the memo does is that it, it outlines for you that the board is prohibited from spending public dollars on electioneering or on promoting this via, you know, direct solicitation to the voters. You may put information out, factual information. You may have a website and probably encourage you to do so. This is not reinventing the wheel. In fact, what we would do is we would look to perhaps some of our adjacent counties that did this that were successful. Um, you'll see a website. You'll see direct, um, uh, information, mailers, I think, printed, possibly printed materials for sure. Um, but there's, there's certain rails that have to go up for the board members and for the expenditure of funds the superintendent would, is also aware of. So that's what the, the gist of this memo was intended to provide, was a, uh, an outline for the board of what is entailed in this effort. Um, so I think at this point, um, you know, the board needs to have conversation at appropriate times as to what you think, what kind of millage, how much. And then probably the superintendent with, and, and his staff would have to, you know, come up with opportunities for the use of those funds, uh, in conjunction with your, your input. So if that makes any sense. In other words, you have to come up with, uh, a plan. Um, that would then be something that would be the, the basis for the, uh, the voted millage. Bless you.
And Board members, please recall that you previously had requested, Dr. Allen, you in particular, had requested that we look at other school districts that either renewed or had a new referendum, um, to determine how they used uh, any potential dollars that were generated, many of whom kept a holdback percentage to support the arts, athletics, um, workforce, career development, other types of things. And, and so we have that analysis. We're ready for that. Uh, we can share that with the board at a subsequent workshop. Um, but again, the board at one of our previous meetings indicated a, a real concern with timelines, which is why Mr. Murphy in my office worked. Um, and thank you to Drew Crawford and his, and his hard work to get this developed for you so that you would see what our appropriate timeline would be. Um, there's a whole other aspect to this. I, I know that, you know, um, anytime you talk about an increase in taxes at, at a local level, it can become, um, it can become a heated conversation. It can become, it raises alarms or concerns from time to time. Um, I think, however, in this case, in order for us to continue to demonstrate that we want to be competitive, um, if you look at the history of raises that we've given over the last four years, excuse me, that you've given over the last four years, uh, you are to be commended. I mean, they are considerable, and yet we still lag, um, in many areas, whether it's administrative pay, whether it's instructional pay. Dr. Allen and I had a recent conversation about teacher starting salary has been frozen now for two years. And our first-year entry-level salaries are not competitive with many of the surrounding districts at this point. Um, so this would allow us to help offset and address those things. There's two important bills that are making their way through the House and the Senate right now um, that I know Ms., Ms. Yoakam and her team are supporting. They've asked for our support, um, which allow us to go back to a traditional step in lane, which had been previously eliminated. Um, from a district perspective, gives us great, um, forecasting ability and much, much, much more stability when it comes to planning our finances out multiple years in advance. Um, but this is something we've answered into cautiously. I know, uh, related to that, and I know related to some of the concerns that you have each expressed to me about a potential referendum, you start with messaging, how do we use our money? And, and Mr. Keys, Dr. Allen, others, Mr. Sharpless have requested a committee. I, I've sent the structure for that committee. It's going to be on our next workshop for us to discuss. Um, and that's a committee comprised, again, that will be a kind of a deficiency audit. Uh, that will also be the committee that long-term, much like to happen in a sales tax committee, would be in place to audit and hold us accountable for the expenditure of any dollars and revenue brought in. But they can also magnify our voice within the communities. We have our district advisory committee. We have others. Um, there are other, I think, organizations and entities that would stand ready to support us in our initiatives. Um, but again, it starts with transparency about how we currently use our funds, um, because it can easily be misconstrued. Uh, Dr. Allen and I had a great conversation today about this. You know, we give what's being labeled as historical raises, and then we're going out for a referendum, and it seems a conflict, right? And it's, it, it, but for the layman, it can be. And, and so for us, we have the obligation then to make sure that we're educating them, bringing them along, providing the explanation. Um, and I think that we'll be very successful in doing that in partnership with others. There, I think there's a sincere interest in seeing us flourish, continue to improve and flourish, um, and demonstrate our commitments to our employees. So I, I say that to begin with, but again, this was, this was prompted by your last conversation about the sense of urgency to get started on this sooner rather than later.
And, and thank you, uh, Superintendent Hyde. And, and thank you, uh, Mr. Murphy and your team for doing this because we've been talking about it for a minute. And we know, we know that we need to have all of the knowledge that we can, can have to make the best decision. Uh, one of the things Superintendent Hyde, when we, I guess, we're going to have a work session on this, I would imagine, uh, I would like to know exactly what, uh, support we're going to be getting from PEA and the state organization as well, because I know that, uh, Ms. Yoakam has indicated that they have a lot of tools that we can use and, uh, utilizing those tools. And even though November twenty twenty-six seems like it's far away, it's really not. So if, if we're going to do this, I don't know, it's probably here in this document somewhere as far as when we would have to have approval to vote on it, I would imagine. It's here somewhere so that we can work towards that and, and, and make a decision to, to do whatever we need to do. That's just my take on it.
We will work with PEA, AFSMI, and others, um, and potentially may even do a shared presentation to the board on April eighth. That's a morning workshop, so we can definitely bring that back, um, for further discussion at that point. There is no, there is no board meeting that follows, so there'll be no vote that night, so it gives you plenty of time to chew on whatever it is we present to you. And then we can bring it back, back-to-back at a future board meeting workshop so that the board can have, continue to have discussion and dialogue about this. Mr. Sharpless.
First, just want to thank, um, our partners, um, for this, uh, document. I think it, it lays out a great timeline as far as, I always love at the end of the, of each one of the dates, it says, "or earlier." Uh, I like that too.
On the board.
Correct, correct. But that was the late, those were the late, so I like the "or earlier" part especially. Um, and so really, what I also like about it is it shows, kind of, it kind of shows that this kind of decision isn't something that can happen last minute um, very clearly. Even if it was push come to shove, you, you, it still takes, uh, over six months for this process to even hit, to, to, until we get to the election, uh, of that. Uh, so my point is, I, I think this is something that we can get started earlier rather than later. I wholeheartedly agree with you, Board Member Fields, on that. It's, it's not time to wait. Um, and so, um, yeah, I would love to see this come through the April eighth meeting with the suggestions and that, so we can get started with it earlier.
And our goal would be to make sure that you each have a packet on, on all of this, so that you have talking points and you can help address any questions or concerns that may come up. Um, I think that's important for you to have the facts, right? Um, and, but, and so we have to be very cautious and make sure you have that to preempt any dialogue that may develop within the community.
And I, I want to reiterate that point, Superintendent. Thank you for hearing us as well on the efficiency side of it. I know we did that audit a while back and, um, you know, we got results of that, but I think an ongoing committee is, is needed because we don't want to ask our taxpayers to pay more mon- you know, to get, to increase their taxes without showing that we are using their tax dollars wisely. Improved it. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Wyatt.
Thank you. And I think that my question has been answered, but I just want to confirm because one of the things that we talked about last time was, is there a "too early"? Or is, but it looks like everything says earlier, so we can, we could do this today hypothetically if it was on the agenda for...
Presumably.
There's not a...
There's not a...
There's not a "too early."
There is not a 12-month limitation.
As we, okay.
Which used to be in statute, but then was amended. So, yeah, but from a practical standpoint, and I know that Mr. Crawford spoke to the county attorney on this matter, the county generally likes to have at least six months, the ballot and, you know, the proposed, the proposal, which would be a resolution of this board, at least six months before the, they would, you know, transmit it and put it on the ballot so that...
Well, my hope is that we're giving them much more.
Oh, yes, yes.
But I just want to make sure there wasn't "too early."
The, the work now that needs to begin is what we've just been discussing, and that is what's between March 10th of 2025 and March 24th of 2026 or earlier. We need to start that right now, I think. And the superintendent has indicated that he's prepared to do that, probably already has been. One of the things that I, I just want to impress on the board as we go through this process, this is, I don't think any of these, you all have participated in this particular type of a, of a, of an effort before that I'm aware of. And there are some relatively recent prohibitions that have gone into Florida statute in terms of the expenditure of public dollars on elections or matters that are going to be put to voters for referendum. You can't spend public dollars on "vote yes on this" or, you know, directly what we call electioneering. And so you can, however, provide factual information, and it's incumbent, I think, on the board in conjunction with the superintendent and his professional staff to develop that desired facts, you know, the, the information, the, the distribution formula, you know, all of the things that are part of what make up the use of these dollars to include the amount. You know, we've, we've done some, some comparisons, and I think you can see, you know, you know what your general fund is, and that information can be provided, what, what 1 mil would generate in Polk County for use by the school for operational purposes, but you really need to set out what is your plan for that. Because I think that gives credibility to the voters so they can see you intend on doing this. And I like the idea of having an, an audit or an efficiency committee, a committee that's charged with looking at and, and delivering, make sure you've delivered on what you've said. And so I think that's probably very important, accountability, transparency. At the end of the day, the voters are, are looking for that, and it's, it's, it's abundant here. I would say editorially, you know, we, we have a lot of things going on. There are a lot of things going on in the legislature right now. And so, you know, the, the, the fate of real estate, you know, ad valorem taxation in Florida is certainly under discussion right now and perhaps even under study, you know, in terms of whether that's going to be something statewide. I don't know yet how that will play out and, and all, but right now, this is an analysis of what the current law would allow for us to do. And so I think that's, that's probably, there are other, as you can see, the memo in a, in a rather summary fashion, there are other forms of, of taxation that are available. You didn't want that. You didn't ask for any in-depth analysis on those, but there are others that are available. But I think where you want to go is this voted millage that can be used for operational purposes, which was what the other districts have done. For Hillsborough, I think, 2024, and I think they were successful. No reason why we shouldn't be either, frankly.
Mr. Keys.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Thank you, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Murphy, for getting that to us, a very informative memo. And also thank you to the superintendent for bringing up the efficiency committees, so to speak. I think that, you know, I need to push the button earlier to speak because all these things have been said, but I'm a big fan of transparency and, and showing those out. And I think that if we can show that we have a, a real need and we show that what our purpose is going to be in that, that that definitely paves the road more effectively to present that to the taxpayer because as a government entity, we have to be transparent and, and state only the facts and where these monies are going. So I think that the board's willingness to look at this and then come ahead and have real conversations in the public, in the public spectrum, and then to say to say, "We're, we hear you and we're, we're making our best effort to move forward," earlier rather than later, shows that we're being proactive and not reactive, which speaks volumes. So I'm excited about seeing this going and, and taking very deliberate steps moving forward to making sure that we do this the right way and that we do it the most effective way we can. That's good.
Dr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. Yeah, just to, you know, add brief comments at this point. We're still young in the discussion. I mean, ultimately, the voters are going to make this decision, but I'm excited to hear our passions and our vision moving forward, where we see the highest need that's going to benefit the most amount of students. And so with that, I look forward to the research phase at this point. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Seeing there are further questions or comments on that item, board members, the last official item that we have today on today's agenda, as far as the superintendent's report, is an executive summary, PEA Collective Bargaining Settlement 2024-2025. And I will ask Ms. McCabe or Mr. Warren, please come forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I know that you have the presentation in front of you that was quite a long PDF. I'm hoping today, by the time we're done, we can summarize that and kind of reduce that down to some information that you can leave with, with respect to what happened at the table while we were negotiating. Today, the superintendent and district staff were pleased to recommend the approval of the collectively bargained agreements for teachers, paraeducators and ESP. A vote was held for these groups on March 14th, 2025, and it passed at 99% in all three PEA contracts. The information in front of you says that we'll provide the results to you quantitatively, and I'm going to do that at this time. For teachers, there were 3,233 votes tallied or cast. 3,201 of those were yes and 32 no, which attributed to a 99% success rate for teachers. Paraeducators, there were 615 votes tallied, 611 yes and four for no, and that again attributed to a 99% success rate. For ESPs, there were 273 votes tallied, 271 of those were yes, two were no, and again, a 99% success rate for passing on the contracts and the TAs that are before you today. This is a culmination of a lot of work on both parties' accounts. There were eight meetings that occurred where we came together and ultimately reached settlement and negotiations on February 26, 25. The proposed tentative agreements are for the three employee groups, and it revises contract language as well as 24, 25 salaries and supplements. The term of the three contracts concludes on June 30th, 2026, with salaries negotiated annually. The proposed TAs, or tentative agreements, as we call them, for the three employee groups revises several contract articles of interest to both parties. With union ratification and pending school board approval, the tentative salary adjustments will be retroactive to July 1, 2024. And then the contract language pieces that are before you, separate from the salary, will become effective July 1, 2025. I will give a high-level summary of the teacher salary schedule increases, and we can get into more details of those in a moment, if you prefer. The performance pay schedules for teachers that are on a 10-month contract with no prior experience maintains the state standard of a $47,005 starting salary. All additional pay scale levels will receive an increase that range from 2.65% to 7.07%. Our most experienced teachers would also, that hold a continuing contract or professional services contract, would also see those same ranges as well. The most experienced teachers that are 13 years or more of experience will see an increase from 3.73% to 7.07%. And if you've not already done so, you can go back to the, to the salary grids and the schedules, and you can see the percentages broken out by the various levels and years as well to see how those spread across various levels. The priority here was to work on compression, and that was a success. Within the teacher supplemental salary schedule, there were specific supplement improvements and additional supplements added, most notably would be school counselors. You may remember a year or so, we were before you, and we talked about the dean supplement, and we rolled that into their own salary schedule so the supplement wasn't taxed at the higher rate. We followed that model, and we're doing the same for school counselors. So the 2,500 that they typically would see as a supplement, they will receive this year in the 24, 25 school year, but going forward, it will have its own schedule where it will be part of their salary and not be taxed at the higher rate as a supplement. For ESP and paraeducators, educational support personnel will receive an increase at all levels of the pay scale, the starting salary being $15 to $15.34 was an increase of 34 cents. Paraeducators also receive an increase at all levels of the pay, with the starting salary increasing from $15 to $15.39 per hour. I would like to pause for just a moment and let you know, my next piece is to take you through the TAs. Not, I'm, I'm going to go through article by article, but some of the language that I'm going to discuss with you and highlight when we get there, it covers all three groups. Because when we talk about the language, we do the same language for teachers that we do for pairs, that we do for ESPs. So before I go forward, I'm going to pause and see if there are any questions.
Mr. Sharpless.
Yes, so I was just looking at the initial, I just have some questions. So it says the, the PEA, PEA represents approximately 91, 9144 employees. Is that, that is how many they represent total, or is that membership? I want to make sure I got that clear first.
That would be total.
Total, okay. And then when you break it down by how many teachers, paraeducators and educational support, and then you see how many votes were cast, each one of these were ranged anywhere from 37 to 48% of the population, depending on which ones. And so I, the question I have is, when the contract goes out to be ratified, is that only going to PEA members, or is that going to the total population?
Total population.
Okay. And so that means less than half of our teachers voted, voted at all positive...
4% of pairs, 4% of teachers and 52% of ESPs turned out to vote.
Yeah.
That's the highest turnout we've ever had. Last time, when you...
Yes, you do.
Yeah. That's good data.
Thank you, Ms. Yocum.
Um, last ratification in October 23, we had 35% turnout in teacher and para, 47% turnout in our secretary contract. This time, we had 41% turnout in paras, 47% with teachers and 52% turnout in our secretaries. So that turnout is continuing to increase. I'm very proud of the groundwork we did to get that turnout, and we're just going to keep getting more turnout each year.
And are you seeing that trend?
Yes.
Not just this one time?
Yes, yes. And it was, it was even lower in the 22 ratification. So each year, we've gotten better at, about getting turnout. It goes out to every employee covered under our contracts. And I do want to make one thing with the support staff, or not the support staff, the student services with the $2,500. It's not just for school counselors. That student services pay schedule incorporates school counselors, mental health and, uh, mental health counselors, social workers, school psychologists, speech language pathologists. So all of those will be getting the $2,500. They'll get a supplement this year, and then they'll have that added into their base salary starting in July 1.
I have a couple more questions. And so that 9144 total employees that PEA represents, how, how many total employees for our district, do you know?
Our total employees are about 13,400 total employees.
So we're looking at...
About 70% of them.
70%. And, and what percentage does ASME represent and NUG? If you could just kind of break those out, so I have the...
I'm going to say ASME, maybe 20%, 15 to 20%.
Okay. So this is a big majority of our, of our employees, so I just want to...
Big chunk.
Yeah, okay. All right. That's all...
The ASME unit's comparable, I think, to the paraeducator group.
Okay.
About 1,500.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that was public knowledge, so, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Say, oh.
Dr. Allen.
Thank you, Superintendent. On the supplement schedule, one thing that I, I like when I'm looking through the teacher salaries, I could do the comparison, but there's not a comparison. I mean, I could go back to last year's settlement to see the changes. I mean, obviously, you know, like minor, like categories, but collectively, when I look at that full list, can I see if we've changed other areas of supplements?
You are making a segue to the next part of our presentation.
Okay, very good. And then secondly, you know, when we went through and we received our salary allocation, right, we touted the 4% that we were offering and extending to teachers. What was, when we got to this endpoint here, you know, we, we can see there's a range 2.65 to 7, right? Which, by the way, I mean, other school districts around the state, they're like, wow, how did you get to that, you know? But where'd we go, from 4% to 4 point what? To extend, right? When we came back to the bargaining table at the very end here, we had 4% that we initially gave, right? And then we came up with a certain amount of extra dollars. I think it was approximately five.
So, so the, I, I think...
My question is, you know, is it that we gave, you know, 4.2% to the PEA to then distribute? That, I was just trying to get to that final number that we extended out to our teacher unit.
Mr. Pitts. So, so I want to clarify because you, you made mention of something that I want to make sure we don't miscommunicate.
Okay.
We never said it was 4% for every employee. We said it averaged out to 4% for every PEA member. However, we were very clear in that very first meeting, I stated it, that we would then work with PEA to, to assign those dollars to help address compression, which was our commitment all along. The additional mil or roughly, well, less than a mil or less than a full percent that we had to bring back into the collective bargaining agreement would have brought us to what, Jason, if you had to average it across for all teachers or for all PEA? Do we have that number? If not, don't, don't guess. We can give it to you.
I'm not going to guess. I'll bring you back that, that number here in just a bit. But it wasn't that we had extra money, it was that we will have program cuts in the near future to...
And that would be my next question. Did we ever get that list of program cuts that were addressed?
So that was a request from a singular board member. That was not a directive from the board. However, I'll be happy to satisfy that. Yes, I have been highlighting every single budget contract item, and you will get a copy of that. They are color-coded. Red means it's going. Orange means it's under consideration. Yellow means it's under consideration, and those will be determined based off my follow-up with conversations with individual departments because I don't want to just go in haphazardly start slashing programmatic supports without understanding the full extent to which they may impact classrooms and students. Mr. Pitts will provide me, you were, you were made aware of a dollar amount in a program area during a recent conversation with the board in closed session, and so I can give you an update on an estimated amount because that's not a contract. That is an existing program outside of contracts that will be phased out. And so, and then, so you'll receive that.
Before tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. I was under the impression that we were going to receive that collectively as a board, but I thought that was communicated. All right. So then I'll get a number as far as the 4% in comparative. I appreciate that. All right? I think that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Now we'll move on if there are no other questions.
There are none, sir.
Okay. With a summary of the tentative agreements. Now, what's going to come next? You saw a chart of all the articles for the teacher para ESPs, and you had a bunch of PDFs for pages of documents we signed. What I'm going to do is walk us through those item by item as it walks across contract to contract. The first I want to talk about is teacher Article III and VI, which also walks across to paraeducator VIII, calendar change and planning time. And you know what? I just had an idea. I can also let you, I can send you my notes that would have this when we're done, if it's helpful. So you'll have it for reference and for any points that you'd want to, to offer, highlight when you're out and about in the communities or otherwise. All right. So under teacher Article III and VI also walks across to para, Article VIII for calendar change and planning time. The first thing we did was you'll find that in Article 6.3A and 6.3B of the teacher agreement... The first thing we did was, you'll find that in Article 6.3A and 6.3B of the teacher agreement, it establishes that principals may now get to have up to one collaborative planning, PLC or faculty meeting, or other day-to-day gathering planning to increase student achievement. Now, the new language here that was, that was a big piece for all of us, was even on weeks shortened by a holiday. Previously, we were limited, and we could not meet on those weeks. We worked very closely with teaching and learning, as well as bargaining at the table. And so, at the end, what this ended up doing for us, this new language for those articles, increased for 17 days of planning for administrative use during those weeks. They could have faculty meetings, they could do PLCs. So that was a big, a big component. The other component, in order to get that to come about, was the fact that we increased from seven to 10 early release days. And that, that contract language is now before you, which wasn't a previous MOU. And so, those changes now are in place, and they align with our current calendars and no MOUs in place from here forward in that regard. Another piece that was a key win, or, or an important takeaway, was for our CDATs. Over on the CDAT side, those are our CDATs that work as teachers with our young students. It provides them the opportunity to have self-directed, self-directed planning time on those days that teachers, in Article III of the school calendar, are getting their days as well. So now they're gonna get some accesses to plan, and to go through the trainings, and to do the necessary pieces they need to do what is required of them in their classrooms. The next one I'm gonna go to is teacher Article VI, and para Article VIII, and ESP Article XII. This is the 30-minute lunch discussion. The tentative agreements, before you establish a 30-minute lunch for teachers, it also establishes that 30-minute lunch for paraeducators and for ESP. We do have a planning year of the current year that we're in, the 25, 26 school year. We collected a lot of data with respect to what our lunch periods looked like, and how our facilities were oriented, because we were concerned that some of our facilities couldn't accommodate a 30-minute lunch. Furthermore, we knew that we had scheduling challenges as well. But I will say that the data, the data put us at almost 83, 84% right now, or 30 minutes. We're within striking range of, I think it was 27 minutes. I'm citing the data that we, we collected, but we're real close. And then we would have an implementation of the 30-minute lunch in school year 26, 27. The next tentative agreement comes to us from the TAC committee, which is a joint committee that meets, and then they bring proposals back to the bargaining table. That committee met, and the three items that specifically you'll see there is previous language stated that in the event of a procedural error, a rating of not evaluated, and that the teacher would be considered to have an overall effective rating. So, we've now changed that if there's a procedural error, and in the event that there is the error, and a rating of not evaluated is, is put for the, for the teacher, and the teacher would have been considered for an overall rating. It establishes then, an appeal process for the SAO. What we noticed was, sometimes teachers are getting moved, the assignments are changing. And so, what the committee brought back is it provides a process for appeals, for added criteria of a change in position or assignment after the second semester, or, and/or after the SAO deadline has closed or passed. So, we worked our way through that, and that impacts Article 15 of the teacher evaluation. Next item is teacher Article 21. This is unpaid leaves. It also walks across for paraeducator Article VII, as well as ESP Article XI. This language establishes that when a combination of medical to personal leave, or vice versa, is used within a school year, that the position will only be held for the initial 12-week period. It limits an employee from having a position held for 24 weeks when, when returning, and using these leaves within the same year. So what had happened to us previously is someone would go out on a leave, they would return, they may work for three or four weeks, six or eight weeks, and then they go out on another leave. So we would have held your position for 12 weeks before, and we're gonna hold, hold your position for 12 weeks after. And so we worked with building principles, and worked with the union in negotiations to say, if you're taking those, and, and, and they're consecutive in a, in a school year, you're only gonna get the, your position held for one 12-week period. For teacher Appendix B and Appendix C, I think this may be the one where we're gonna tease down your question, Dr. Allen. For 24, 25, we have already discussed the, the group that's receiving the $2,500 stipend, and how that's going to migrate into the salary. I want to, and, and then I want to conclude, the counselor supplement will be phased out, and then July 1, 2025, we look to roll over to that new schedule. For teacher Appendix C, which is the supplements, here's the, the summary of changes to Appendix C. We added assistant weightlifting for boys and girls at a value of $1,300. There's also a criteria that it has to have a minimum of 15 rostered students to, to receive that stipend. The second item that you'll notice is a change there, is we added JV flag football for girls at $1,200. It's a spring sport. That was necessary to be added to make sure we're encompassed with our Title IX and other components in that regard. Roman numeral III qualified that the first responders and certified trainers are for fall, winter, and spring, at a value of $1,800 per supplement there. And the very last change, we added the criteria that for multi-grade schools, a person will be paid the higher of the two supplements as applicable. So if we have a 912 school, or a K through 8, a middle, for example, a middle, senior high teacher, would receive the senior high supplement, and not the middle school supplement. Because as you do look at the supplement grid, you'll notice there's elementary, middle, and high. So we, we wanted to highlight that. The next piece I want to talk about is para, actually, that, that's a lot of teachers. You, I can pause for a moment, see if there's any questions. Seeing none, well, we can continue.
Seeing none.
All right. Paraeducator, Appendix B. In Appendix B, that's our list of all of the paraeducator positions. We moved the ESOL paraeducator from a PA1 to a PA3. And next, in the paraeducator salary schedule, we've already talked about that at the beginning. In the ESP contract, Article 15, this was a very important discussion with respect to college hours. Employees that are covered under the ESP contract will receive additional money for semester hours related to position or other degree program as specified. There was a chart that's broken down there, and I'll summarize it for you. Well, for an ESP that documents that they have 30 hours relative to their position, it's a value of $500 extra. If it's in another field, it's still 500. If they go further to acquire 60 degrees, and they have the amount of hours, they may also have an AA or an AS degree, relative to their position, it's $500. If it's for an other area, it still remains $500. And now, I was excited to hear the paraeducator discussion that Ann presented earlier. This too begins to move in a direction where we can have ESPs that are working toward education certification. Moving beyond 60 to 90 hours, if it is in, within the area of a area of certification of education, it's $700. And if it's in an other area, it's $300. If they come all the way through to their BA or BS, and it's in an area relative to a college of education, it's another $700, and then out-of-area would be 300. I do want to make a note that those values I quoted to you, they do stack. So if they're earned incrementally, they do add on one another. The hours have to be from a regionally accredited college, accepted by the state of Florida for certification purposes. And credit for participation in an education degree program requires documentation of admission to that college of education. And lastly, there's language that says if they transfer out of the ESP group to a position that does not have the college hour supplement, the supplement's gonna be removed. My last summary is for ESP Appendix A. And this is the chart where we have a list of all of the ESP positions. And some of this was cleanup with respect to what we went through with PERC, I believe, as well as some other positions that we had decided to move in collective bargaining. We added accounting clerk specialist head start, PG O3. We added district office systems assistant, 1, PG O4. We moved professional development specialist, planning and assessment specialist, and childcare service specialist from PG O5 to PRS 12. And lastly, we added secretary 3, executive and fine arts specialist to PRS 12. That's a summary of the TAs that you have before us. And then, I won't, I won't rehash the, the financial impact, as I believe we did that at the front end of our discussion, but you'll notice there on your documentation, the financial impact provided as well. Thank you. Questions?
Seeing none. Dr. Allen, I will give you a, a point of correction. Since I had forgotten that you will be spending time discussing attorney candidates, I may have adequate time to finalize and compile that chart for you, so you can see estimated savings. Again, please understand, they're color-coded, I'll give you the key, so no final decisions have been made yet, because I'm bringing that to you for discussion, for further discussion, but to, to ensure that you see the totality of what we're looking to help cover costs, not just those associated with the pay raise, with, with, basically to help address some of the concerns that have been expressed before, that we've tried to build a fund balance, and we want to make sure we don't begin deficit spending. So programmatically, what are the essential services we can provide moving forward? So, Dr. Allen, I believe, if you do run about 60, 90 minutes, I should have enough time with Mr. Pitts and Ms. Jenkins to finalize that list for you. Yes, sir. Ms. Fields?
Thank you, Superintendent. I believe I was the one that asked that question about the programs. I believe I was. And I knew it was gonna take a lot of work to get it done. And so, I believe, but my memory could not be 100%, that was one of the determining factors for me, as it relates to going forward with this, because I understand the value of it. And Lord knows, we had a lot of discussion, we, we spent a lot of time and effort, but I want to make sure, going into making a decision like this, that we understand that there would be some impact. There would be some things that we're gonna have to make tough decisions on, as we talked about health insurance, and we're gonna be looking at other factors as well. So, I don't know that you will be able to provide it before we are expected to vote on it tonight. But even if you can't, I think as soon as possible, we need to know that, so we'll know what we're having to chew on, and how we're gonna chew it.
There's just one program area I need to work with the team on to update my Excel spreadsheet, and I believe that will give the board a very accurate picture of what we're currently looking at immediately for possible consideration for elimination.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. There are no further questions or comments? Thank you. Board chair, members of the board, there are three items on information. I don't typically go into much detail on these, but I do feel I need to give you some background, and, and again, to address community concerns that typically arise or relate to this topic surrounding human growth and development, or reproductive health lessons. Just to give you a little bit of background, I know each of you has the document, and hopefully you've looked at it. Please understand that because of a statutory change, we submitted our plan. So the board has to review and approve our reproductive health lessons each year. However, last year, we did not bring them to you, because the state took an entire year to review our submissions. So our 2022 plans were approved, our 2023 plans were submitted in September, we received an update in September of 2024, saying, here are some things that need to be changed, and there were no substantive changes, they were language changes. You can see that on page 1. Basically, there are vocabulary edits, like, for example, in the high school lessons, the term birth control, or the phrase birth control, was replaced throughout our lessons with contraceptives or contraception. Additionally, the high school lessons addressing family planning, the slide addressing emergency contraceptive was removed, and the new 2023 Florida State Academic Standards and Health Education were added to each lesson. You, you get a lesson summary for each one, we still continue to deliver lessons through our nurses, and those types of things. And please understand that still, to my knowledge, I believe we're the only school district that notifies parents of the daily lesson plans, and allows them to opt in or opt out of those plans. For example, middle school, I think we've talked about this, part of the health curriculum involves hygiene. We don't want students skipping that, with parents assuming, well, if they're gonna be talking about human reproductive health the entire week, well, we don't. We break it out by day, and we allow parents to see that well in advance of those lessons being delivered, so they can make an informed decision. And so, board members, I just wanted to provide that clarity to you. Our lessons have been approved with the, with the requested edits, but I wanted you to understand why you did not see it last year, and that was not a Polk County issue. That was really, I believe, the Florida Department of Education adjusting to new statutory requirements throughout their review process, and updating their curriculum first, and, but it has been approved at this time. Mr. Chair, that concludes anything that I had for the board, sir.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. And, and a reminder that, that curriculum is on our website as well. I was just looking at that last evening. For, it's under the student and parent section, labeled curriculum, and then healthcare reproduction. All right, board members, we are gonna now transition to work through our agenda for tonight. So, give you a moment to transition. And I do see, I thought I saw, yes, Doug Thomas is out with us in the audience, so we'll transition to connect with him in a few moments. So let's quickly go through our agenda for tonight. Any questions on sections A through F? Just our, our typical setup here, just as Justin's trying to track down his documents here. Travis Keys, Mr. Keys, you'll be stepping down for special recognitions. I do see Bishop Mincy out there. Good to see you. He'll lead our invocation. And then, sections G through J, sections G through J. Any questions on that section? All right. Sections K through M? Then moving down, section N through P? Any comments there? All right. And sections Q and R? Mr. Sharpless, you're recognized.
Questions about consent agenda R workforce? I don't know if anyone's able to answer the grant, continuing grant, any question, if any of the people are here for that?
What's the question, sir?
Sure, I just, I had some community people reach out to me and ask, who is the targeted population for the grant? Are these, you know, because this is, basically, from my understanding, the grant is for students to be able to go to, to help with costs that, to go to a Ridge Technical College, correct?
Correct.
And these are students that are with intellectual disabilities, right? Make, make sure I got that clear.
It will include that population, yes, sir.
So, are these, are these former Polk County Public School students? Are they current pub, I'm just, I just had people ask me some questions that I wasn't very clear on.
Sure, so?
They're transition students, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
But, but that's part of the group, so I don't want to speak definitively, so what I'd rather do is bring LeAnn Bennett and her team back later on?
Okay.
To address those questions for you this evening. So if the item needs to be moved to action for further discussion, we can make that happen.
I don't think it needs to, and can I, can I just ask the questions during consent?
I will defer to Mr. Murphy. I don't see why we couldn't provide clarification.
Just informational questions.
I mean, if the board chair is willing to allow for that, then I don't know.
It's not for debate, it's just for informational purposes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll do that during the approval of the consent?
Correct. Okay.
Happy to do that.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Wyatt, you're recognized.
Thank you. I apologized. I missed the one I wanted to comment on, that's J2. And I just wanted to thank the staff for working on this. This is a heart, a MOU with Hartford/Winterhaven. They approached us earlier this school year, and were interested in helping assist with some social services for our homeless students. Their primary goal is to eliminate homelessness in those under 18, which is our target demographic. So they actually will have someone from their team that is co-located on Winter Haven High School's campus, to really support those students with all of the resources that, that they can. So I just want to thank the team for thinking outside the box for how we can make that happen.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. And now we're moving to our action agenda. Tonight, we have one item, which we just discussed during work session. Any comments on that one? Any comments on that one? All right. And then we'll move to the superintendent's report. I see Ms. Matthews in the back. Any report? Okay. I'll just note what we've all received since our last meeting. From Ms. Matthews, do we have anything from you?
No, sir, not.
Mr. Murphy. Oh, man. All right. Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
This is the STEEL program, Mr. Sharpless. So, yes, I, we will have staff here to address. It is, it is targeting transition students, some of whom may still be within the school district, some of whom may be exiting and transitioning out of the school district based on becoming overage, but we will provide further clarification for this evening. I apologize. When I opened it and started to read it, it's a program that began about a little over a year ago for us to begin working towards this, so we will provide additional clarification this evening.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good. And then from there, we'll wrap up with our comments and public comments, and then we'll call it a night. All right. At this point, any other questions on the agenda?
Just a reminder, we will have student, one student discipline item to follow your discussion, and then I'll go ahead, and when you transition to your attorney discussion, I'll vacate with my staff to go finalize that report for you.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. All right. So as we make strides to get our external consultant, Mr. Thomas, up, we're just going to take a two-minute break at this point so we can get our technology set up and transition quickly. So we will now adjourn.
Two minutes.
Welcome back to this fine meeting on March 25th, 2025, our work session, and we are extremely happy that we have an incredible individual in front of us, and we appreciate the time and commitment around this, which is a huge opportunity for Polk as well as around the state as well. I mean, I have individuals, hey, is it happening today? Is it happening today, all around the state? So we are very much appreciative of Mr. Thomas and the work that he's done, and I'm sure you can commend the amount of materials that we've all received in written form, but also in visual form as well. So, Mr. Thomas, if you can set the stage, give us some context, and then we'll move from there. You're recognized.
Thank you for those kind words, Dr. Allen. Appreciate that. We like to think that we bring value to your process in terms of trying to understand it, and I will tell you, all kidding aside, rarely do people say that we don't give them enough material to review. So hopefully, hopefully you get a chance to see the breadth of the background that we have, we do as we're evaluating your candidates. So just to set the stage, as you know, we were engaged to originally do a national search for your next general counsel, your successor general counsel after Wes had retired. We've, we went through that process. We reviewed candidates about a month ago. That got narrowed down to nine semifinalists. As I mentioned at the time, we often will lose candidates because they're in other searches or for other reasons, so we ended up losing one of those candidates. So you end up with eight semifinalists that were provided an opportunity to submit a fairly detailed response to some written questionnaires, which talk about their background, their history, their style, how they would bring their experience to the table, the challenges and opportunities that you identified that we used in the marketing of the brochure. And then we also asked them to participate in pre-recorded video interviews, so you get a chance to at least see how they communicate in a relatively short period of time. And then we started some background research on some of their exposure in the media and things of that nature, as we also asked each of those candidates to provide that information as well. So what we had done is packaged all that material up. Those individuals were selected about a month ago, gave them a chance to complete the work, packaged it up, sent it all to you, to give you a chance to do your homework and review that. And the goal today is to really have a conversation with you to hopefully land on typically, our clients select somewhere between three to five folks that they want to bring in for the onsite interview process. I'll walk you through a high level of who those candidates are, just to bring everybody back to the table again, and for those that may be watching in the audience. And then we'll talk a little bit about what the next steps look like and what that interview, onsite interview process looks to be as well. So with that, as I mentioned, as we've done this in the past, rarely do we have candidates reach out to individual board members, but if they do, or do your staff, please have them directed back to me especially, so that we can make sure that everybody gets the same information at the same time, nobody's in an advantage or disadvantage situation as well. This is a slide I often use just to bring everybody back into focus, because I mentioned when I went through the first process a month ago, that we know a little about a lot of candidates. And so we're just trying to get a handle on that's sometimes harder to cut the chafe from the wheat, if you will, with regards to that. But as you get into this stage where now you start to see more of their background, more of their personality, more of their experience, the things that they will deal with if they're ultimately selected, we find that the selection of this process gets a little easier, actually, at this stage, because now you've got a little more meat on the bone to debate and go forward with. But the work does not complete there. Whoever you ultimately select as finalists, we will certainly do some additional work with them. We'll talk about some other assignments that they may be doing as part of the onsite interview process, but we will also complete criminal history, credit, academic, all the database searches, reference checks, things of that nature as well, including a much more detailed, what we call a stage-two media search, which goes into, we have individuals on our staff that look at all the different search engines and all the media exposures that's out there. We'll send those informations to you in a separate report. They'll be broken down into items called findings, if there's anything that may be of controversy, and then the balances, whatever may have occurred at various board meetings or anything in their background as well. So we try to do that heavy lift for you. If you want it, it's there. We know that many times for a position like this, many of your constituents will try to Google and do all that work, so we want to make sure we don't catch you by surprise with any of that. So that's coming next. So what I want to do is just quickly go through, just for the benefit of the audience and those may be watching, and just to bring the board back, the candidates that are under consideration. We have Mr. Adam Patton, presently serving as a general counsel with the state of Florida, the Department of Citrus, here in Bartow. Previous experience as a private practice law firm, also involved in some other private practice work in Lakeland in 2015 and 2016, and was an assistant state attorney with the state of Florida here in the 10th Judicial District. Adriana Treasure, currently an assistant city attorney with the city of West Palm Beach down in Palm Beach, Florida, has been a senior attorney with the Florida Rural Legal Services there in West Palm as well, and also an attorney working with YWCA in West Palm Beach. That was not just really kind of for, it was a very specialized work dealing with women and battered spouses and children of, in very troubled situations. Was an assistant county attorney in Broward County in Fort Lauderdale, also director of compliance with the Government Relations and Licensing Division with a learning experience in Deerfield Beach, and then also in-house legal counsel with a child-focused program called Childnet in West Palm, and then a couple other positions, working with DCF positions as well, and previously as assistant city attorney in Riviera Beach, also in South Florida. Mr. Brad Butler, Jr., currently a senior attorney working with the Florida Department of Health in the Office of Medical Marijuana Use, Tallahassee and Alachua, Florida, a variety of other positions with the state, including a senior attorney for healthcare administration and general counsel, also working with the University of Florida as a research contracting officer and under the Office of Clinical Research, an assistant general counsel of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, was also a legislative analyst and attorney with the Florida House of Representatives, and one of the candidates that we have that are board-certified in state, federal, and administrative practices. Mr. Carl Brody, currently serving as an assistant city attorney with the city of Tampa, Florida for the last several years, had been a team leader in a transition position with the U.S. Small Business Administration in a virtual capacity. Prior to that, served from 1997 to 2020 as an assistant county attorney over in Pinellas County, and then also has done adjunct professor work with Barry University, and also is board-certified in city, county, and local government law. Mr. Jim Green, currently servicing as a general counsel to the superintendent over in Pasco County, had served prior to that on an extinguished career with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, first as chief legal, chief division counsel, most recently in that position, but prior to that, served as deputy chief counsel with the FBI in Washington, DC as well. Jasmine Gibbs, various positions, working with the U.S. Department of Education, the Office of Civil Rights in Washington, DC. That is a remote position. She is actually based here in Florida, but doing that work remote. As you can see, a couple different positions she had held, both as supervisor attorney and also as a general attorney with them. Served also as associate general counsel, equity office and Title IX coordinator with Santa Fe College, Erin Gainesville, and a Title IX program officer with Harvard University up in Cambridge, Massachusetts. Mr. Ray Poole, goes by Ray Gereus is his first name, currently servicing, serving in a very comparable position as chief legal counsel for the Duval County School District, and prior to that, served as chief of legal services in the Nassau County School District in Fernandina Beach, Florida, and has served in public, private, private practice work with Constigie, Brooks, Smith, and Proffitt in Jacksonville, Florida, also a board-certified in education, and also board-certified in labor and employment law. And your last candidate is Kevin Hinson, currently servicing, serving as an assistant state attorney with the state attorney's office in 12th Judicial District down in Sarasota, had private sector experience as well, had a non-traditional background, actually came out of communications, marketing, and technology, and then ultimately wanted to be a lifelong learner and pursue a law degree. And so you can see background, working with brand strategies, also working in marketing components, and also working with NASCAR, also has a JD, and has indicated he is expressing an interest in pursuing a board certification in state and local government as well. So very qualified, diverse set of candidates that you've selected. Hopefully, out of this process, there's somewhere between three to five folks that you would like to learn more about and invite them to come to the process. So I will open it up for conversations. It's a smaller group. I know you're missing two of your board members today, so whether you want to talk through these candidates, or whether you just want to advance some folks, or whether you want to actually go through a formal ranking, similar to what we did when we had many more candidates under consideration, I'll defer to you, Dr. Allen. We can, we can handle this any way you would like to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Board members, I will open the floor to you at this point. Maybe a question I could pose to you as well for our two board members that are not with us today. How do we want to handle collecting their data? Would be a good thing to consider.
This is a bit of a challenge. I'm going to defer to my friend and colleague off to my left, because there was a state or attorney general's opinion dealing with how public selection processes work. It dealt with Florida International University. It's not exactly what you're dealing with here, but they were a public body, and they went through a process where individual board members kind of provided feedback, but it wasn't done in a public session. And so I'm going to stop there, not being accused of being an attorney, and defer to Mr. Murphy to respond to that.
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Thomas is correct. Unfortunately, there are some, there's been some recent developments in the interpretation of Florida's Sunshine Law that make that a little difficult to get information like that when it's in the nature of deliberative or it's part of the decision-making process. So, yeah, we're probably going to be, you know, to the extent you're building consensus and finalizing, the funnel is getting smaller today. It's going to, it's going to be as a result of the five of you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. And we have a quorum at this point.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Doesn't take any certain, yeah, you have a quorum, so you can, you can certainly.
All right. We'd love to hear with that position, just note it from Mr. Murphy, if you have any thoughts. Ms. Fields, you're recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A long day.
A long day, and we just get this. I would recommend that we give our top five and then go from there and see if we're in consensus and move it along. I think everybody should have done their homework.
Indeed.
That's my recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Wyatt, you're recognized.
Thank you. I think it may be beneficial to do the same as we did last time, to see where the averages land. I was a little, I say that mainly because I was pleasantly surprised with a couple of the applicants that I did not have ranked as highly as some of you did, that in reading their deeper responses, changed a little bit. their deeper responses changed a little bit. So I'd love to hear everybody's scores for everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. You know, I guess I'm thinking more here, questions in my mind as well, so if we, we're going to move forward, right? Is that what I'm hearing from everybody? We want to move forward on this. Okay. All right. Very good. So let's, at this point, then, I'm going to give it back to Mr. Thomas, and if you can work through each candidate, and then we can do a roll call on our scores.
Sure. And so not knowing, when I did this, you may remember when I was here a month ago, we had one member who was off, and I had to recalculate and everything else. If you're okay, I'm going to do this by manual, I'll do old school, and then we'll kind of see where things land, if it works out that way. Otherwise, I'll be, I'll be fumbling around with your device again to try to make my averages work out. So what I think I'm hearing you say, Dr. Allen, is based on board member Wyatt's comment, you want to just basically go candidate by candidate, and do a one, meaning you're interested, a two is you could be potentially interested in that candidate, a three is you're not interested in that candidate.
Yes.
Everybody got the same parameters, so we'll try to go to low score, being like a golf score, right? You're trying to achieve here. Okay. So why don't we take them in the order in which they were, just by alphabetical order, by their first name? That's how we've identified them. So your first candidate is Adam Patton, and I'll take whichever members come first, and I'll just kind of tally scores manually here.
I'm going to open up all microphones, and we'll just do a roll call, and we'll just start with District One and go down.
So to make clear, we're giving a one, two, or three for the remaining ones that we have?
Yes.
Yes, for the eight, for the eight candidates.
I rethink what I, I just picked the top five, but okay. We can do that.
I would assume, just to keep everybody on the same page, I assume if you got your top five, they're probably a one or a two, so.
That would be a correct assumption.
Okay. Just try to make sure we're all kind of on the same page in how you want to process this, so. Okay, I will take your lead then, follow.
All right. So just from my perspective, just collectively, I'm just going to give comment in regards to everybody. It was amazing. I mean, I loved that last question, that if there's anything outside of the materials that, you know, we've received with questions, something that we should know about you. I thoroughly loved that. I almost started with that one at times, and so it was fun to move through the candidates and then hear their sentiment, in a sense, with their tone, facial expressions, but then to look at their written documents. So again, I just want to say thanks to all the candidates that has, they've put in so much time on this. So starting with Adam, for me, that would be a one.
Two.
Two.
Next candidate is Adriana Treasure.
Three.
Let's see.
Two.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Travis. Okay, gotcha. Two, okay.
Three.
Three.
One.
Three.
Three. Okay. Next candidate is Bradley Butler.
Three.
Three.
Travis.
Three.
Three.
Two.
Two, okay. Next is Carl Brody.
Two.
Three.
One.
Two.
Next is James Green.
One.
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 My comment on Mr. Green, when I looked at the video and his information, especially the video, it reminded, he reminded me so much of Wes Bridges.
I think from the laughter, everyone agrees, Mrs. Fields.
Yeah, yeah. So I would say a one.
A one, okay.
I was hopeful you were going to say a one.
I was, I was waiting, I paid a breath for that one as well, wasn't sure where that was going to land, so.
Well, I love Wes. No, I do.
I'm a one as well.
You're going to leave it at that? Okay. Got you. Next candidate was Jasmine Gibbs.
A two.
Three.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Next is Ray Poole.
One.
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 And the last is Kevin Hinson.
Three.
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 All right. So just give me one second here. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Okay. All right. So you have two candidates that had ones across the board, so that would be Mr. Green and Mr. Poole. Then your next lowest was Mr. Patton, with seven, a total of seven votes. Once again, low score being the best there. And then you move into Mr. Brody, which is with 10. And after that, you're 12, 13, 14, and 15, in terms of candidates. So let me get a sense of just looking at where the, all ones and twos with Mr. Patton. With Mr. Brody, ones, twos, there is one, three there. Not a problem with Green, not a problem with Poole, and then two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Okay. All right. So you have two candidates that had ones across the board, so that would be Mr. Green and Mr. Poole. Then your next lowest was Mr. Patton, with seven, a total of seven votes. Once again, low score being the best there. And then you move into Mr. Brody, which is with 10. And after that, you're 12, 13, 14, and 15, in terms of candidates. So let me get a sense of just looking at where the, all ones and twos with Mr. Patton. With Mr. Brody, ones, twos, there is one, three there. Not a problem with Green, not a problem with Poole, and then two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Okay. So in the case of Mr. Brody, you have one board member that had rated as a three, the others were twos or ones. So I always ask the question, in this case, board member Wyatt, if we're about to ask these candidates if they're going to do some more work and invest a considerable amount of their time and put themselves out there. Anytime there's a three, my question is, are you okay? Could you be convinced if ultimately that person, you know, does very well in the interview process, that you're okay with that? Or is that a hard three?
I could be convinced. I just was concerned, there's not a ton of education or any education law, which is concerning to me.
Right. His background was more in the municipal, municipal side, but was also board certified. And so that's the, that's the only question I had there. And then the other one is related to Adriana Treasure. The challenge we've got is, three of you had her rated as a three. Let me go back to look at that, so you get a chance to see her background as well. And so the same sort of question, that if she were to participate, and she was able to convince you of her background and skill set, and she was the right person, I just want to make sure there's not a hard three, that they can be convinced otherwise. I realize right now you're screening based on what information you have before you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would be fine. Yeah, indeed.
Okay.
If I can add something, please.
Certainly.
On both of those candidates, I think that it is important for us to look at diversity, and not just ethnicity, but just their level of experience. And Ms. Treasure has a wealth of experience, and a lot of that is targeted towards children. So I just wanted to make the comment on both, on both of those.
Your statement.
So I guess my question would be is, would we be doing ourselves a disservice if we went down to a top five? Because it sounds like there's a, almost a breaking line there between that.
Yeah.
Is that, is that too many? Is what I guess what I'm asking.
Many times, five is the number we land on. What I'll tell you is that, that there's, that's a full day of interviewing for you as a board on the second day. I'll walk through the schedule, so be prepared that they typically are, our public interview process for positions like this are about a 90-minute process. It gives you about 60 minutes for a full-blown traditional interview. You may remember, we talked about a presentation, a TED Talk kind of PowerPoint presentation that's intended to be no more than 10 minutes, and then some dialogue back and forth between the candidates. So that's the only, I'm totally comfortable with five. We manage three to five on a regular basis. It just, you be prepared that if you're going to go to five, that that's a, that's a full day for you, as long as you're.
I'm going to comment on something like that, is it, at least my individual opinion is, I'm more than willing to put forth the effort on an important decision like that, that to take a day to do interviews. I think it's very important, and we should give it our full and undivided attention.
In addition to that, too, some of these candidates, maybe one might decide they don't want to come for the interview. I don't know. And so then, you know, we end up not having enough candidates, so I think we need to keep that in mind.
Well pointed. That's why I never like to go below three, because sometimes they get another offer, or something happens, and to your point, a board member feels that you can lose that and all of a sudden be backed into a very short number, so.
Yeah. And that second day, we've already blocked off the full day.
Yep.
Right? So we're comfortable with that.
Okay. Great. All right. And what I'll, what I'll just, I'll edit, I'll take it, so because obviously the candidates will be speaking with me as well. I'm taking your rankings at this point, based on what you've seen them ahead of, you know, basically, you're comparing them to each other. You're not selecting a final candidate today, you're just in the process of a triage, and so candidates always just want to make sure, hey, if I, if I come in, I got a fair shot that I'm not, it's a prejudge, and I've certainly gathered that from all of your comments, so I'll convey that to all of them as well. So that's certainly helpful.
Since I didn't say anything, yes, I'm the same.
Yeah. I assumed as much. I thought I saw a nod on that, but yeah, I followed the lead, definitely.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Sharp.
Well, let's talk a little bit then, about what that looks like for the next round. As I mentioned earlier, we'll notify these candidates, ask them if they're willing to participate. Assuming they're on board, we'll go forward. We'll do criminal history, credit, background, education, the stage two media searches that I mentioned. We traditionally ask for our finalists to participate in what's called a first-year game plan. It's a written assessment of if they get selected, how will they approach the job in the first 30, 60, 90, 180 days, and kind of the balance of the year. It really gets them focused on a work plan, and they will all do that differently. I know it'll sound like it'll all be similar. I've seen thousands of these. They all do them a little bit differently, and they'll give you some other insights about kind of their, getting their head and their heart around the position. We offer, it's a, it's a extra service if you want. It's entirely your call to do a personality, a DISC assessment. It's a well-known establishment process where the candidates take an assessment online, they get a copy of it, you get a copy of it, and we compare those candidates so that you've got that as you're interviewing them, and you can kind of see where they kind of fall in the categories. That's, that's an optional service. If that's something you would like to do, we can do it. It's totally your call on that one as well. And then we also talked a little bit about this assessment or presentation exercise, and it sounded like there was a desire to do this. Many times, we'll have them do, maybe on challenges and opportunities, or something of that nature, but try to get a 10-minute TED Talk. The nature of this position, they're going to have to do concise presentations in a public fashion, and we want to kind of see how they do that work as well. So if you're comfortable with that, we certainly recommend that. So that would be the first-year game plan and the assessment exercise is something that we would strongly encourage. The DISC, I'll defer to you if that's something that you would like to include in this process or not.
Well.
Yeah, yeah. So we do have an open floor here, so, but yeah, if we get it a little out of order, we'll, we'll.
I don't, I don't think, I'm familiar with the assessment. I don't think the DISC assessment is needed for this position. It's just my personal opinion, but anyone else could certainly persuade me.
I don't think so either.
Concur. Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay. As I said, totally voluntary. We have some to do, some that don't. Not a problem at all from there. Let's talk a little bit about, I was working with Caroline and your staff in the HR department about what that process looks like. We would envision that now with five candidates, now we know how many candidates, that'll impact how much we can squeeze into the day and how long those would be. But we talked about having at least some sort of facility tour, community tour with five candidates. That may be more facility than, Poole County's a big county, it's hard to get around to all the different spots and still make the timing work, but we'll work with your staff on that. We traditionally recommend that although this board, this position is reporting to you as a board, they're going to be working with your superintendent and the senior staff. We typically encourage an opportunity where each of the candidates have a chance to interact in a group session with your senior staff here, just so they can get a chance to kind of meet the team and vice versa. That's an important element for the candidate, as well as for us to kind of see how that person fits into the culture of this organization, kind of the DNA of the district. So that would normally take place during that first day. And then I believe we've talked about you doing your one-on-one kind of musical chair process in the afternoon. I just want to verify that was still the case, and once again, I haven't set that schedule, not knowing how many candidates you were going to select, because that'll have a bearing, but they're likely to be kind of a first round, and then probably two of you that would be in a second round in order to make that process work and fall into play. But I just want to make sure that one-on-one session is still anticipated to be the afternoon for you.
And that's on the first day.
Nine to one.
So yeah, nine to one is our scheduled time on that.
Okay. So we did yours first. My mistake. All right. I was thinking of the afternoon. Okay. So nine to one is the window we've got with the board. Okay.
And that's on the 15th, correct?
Yes, ma'am, on the 15th.
That's on the first day, yes. That would give you a one-on-one session. I'll figure out the math and the timing on that, and maybe relatively quick, but we'll stop the music and shift, shift everybody around, but there will be some breaks in there because of, just with seven of you and only five members of them.
Yeah. All I need is enough time to play Twister or shoot some ladder.
Duly noted. So there. Okay. So we'll plan for that in the morning, and then work through the rest of the day in the afternoon. Then day two, we anticipated that that would be, each candidate would spend approximately 90 minutes with you, assuming it takes that long, but we'd like to, two hours is too long, 60 minutes is too short, so 90 minutes just seems to be about right. That would incorporate a traditional public interview, probably in this chamber, or in some, we talked, I'm sorry, you talked about, that's right. I forgot, board member Wyatt had asked maybe to do it in a different area, but it would be done in public pursuant to the Florida statutes, and that would provide a traditional interview process with you, coupled with a PowerPoint presentation, and then Q and A back and forth with a candidate as well. From there, we'll work with you at the conclusion of that process. If you come to a point where you're prepared to make a recommendation on who you would like to extend an offer to. Typically, what most of my clients do is work with either the chair or representative of the board, and your legal counsel, myself, and I help try to negotiate whatever that package and terms would look like, based on direction from there. And then I believe you're scheduled for another board meeting about a week later, as I recall. I don't have that date right in front of me, but I remember there being a subsequent front of me, but I remember there being a subsequent meeting, that the formal document would come back for your formal review and approval at that stage.
Correct, it would be the following Tuesday.
Following Tuesday, I thought it was coming up shortly thereafter, right. So that's what I've got for you. Told you I'd get you out of here quicker than 90 minutes today.
Well done.
Sorry, do we need to have anything additionally public notice for the 16th if we're going to discuss that today, and you're going to make sure that's done appropriately, and that we don't have to wait two hours to then have that conversation?
Right, I think that you need to decide where you want to have that, and then I would notice that as a special meeting of the school board, as opposed to a work session, so you can actually take action, official, I mean, you're taking action, so you can vote formally.
To give direction, to be able to.
To give direction on the commencement of negotiations, and then as Mr. Thomas said, present a contract back.
Normally what happens on that point is we would advertise the schedule, saying starting and stop is estimated, and, you know, there may be appropriate breaks for lunch and things of that nature for recess at that point. Typically, just to confirm though, we typically would have, although at the conclusion of that, we don't normally have the public asking them questions per se, that's your, this is your time with the candidates, but typically at the end, and Mr. Murphy will identify this, normally before you reach any conclusion, you may want to take public comment from those that are watching or what have you, but that's different than actually candidates being interviewed by, by the public per se during those sessions.
You very definitely want to afford the public the opportunity to comment prior to you taking any official action, I think Florida law requires that.
Yeah, indeed, and Ms. Avett, if, I think we're comfortable with Jim Miles, I know that was part of our conversation, or the superintendent's, yeah. The large conference room.
I think Jim Miles would be better.
Yeah, especially for those breakout individual interviews, so if we can just check on the availability of that space, and then we just need to coordinate those spaces for each board member as well.
I had, I had a question, unrelated, and maybe I missed it with everything going on, are we generating our own questions, or?
I was going to get to you, thank you, thank you for raising it. So with your consent, normally what we'll do, we'll develop the master schedule, and I'll work with your staff and the location, logistics, and make sure it's all been noticed with your attorney. We would typically generate a list of proposed questions for both you as board members, as well as the senior staff, but normally the schedule, I'll build in a time to meet with them before they start that process, to go through those, and there may be other questions that want to be asked or something, we'll work through that to get them in order. We'll do the same thing with you before you go through your session on the second day of the interview, I just want to kind of make sure you're all prepared to go. We'll give you more questions than you want, we can talk about prioritizing those, and that way we can make sure you're prepared to address it, and there may be other questions that you want to ask candidates that I haven't necessarily developed, and we want to make sure you got that opportunity, but you won't have to start from ground zero, we'll give you some basics.
Do you intend on doing that on April 15th at the open work session meeting?
Yeah, this is the challenge of doing this in public, because at that point, anybody is aware of what those questions are likely to be. We don't, we do not share those questions ahead of time with any of the candidates, they're getting them as they come forward, but for us to do in a public session, that becomes a bit of a challenge. So I'll defer to you, if I, if I send you a list of proposed questions, and can I accept responses back from them on proposed questions individually, and then we can develop kind of a prioritized list, so we don't have to spend as much time talking publicly about those?
I mean, as much as I'd like to say yes, I am concerned that that potentially is problematic.
Yeah, that's the concern.
That's an important part of the deliberative process, so, you know, there's nothing that would prevent you as a consultant meeting individually with board members, as long as you're not acting as a conduit, you know, at convenient times that board members could be available, but, you know, that's, you know, in terms of the questions that are asked, I don't know if you want to develop a, develop some, I mean, do you have a script of some type that you?
Well, typically for an hour interview, not counting, although it'll be 90 minutes, you're going to get about 60 minutes in an interview process with a candidate, that's going to be about 12 to 15 questions. So what I often will do is generate a list greater than that, and then sometimes what we've done is we're in a session like this, we'll just say, okay, how many, how many of you like question, give me your top 10 or 15 questions, and they'll say number two, number five, whatever, and we can quickly determine kind of where the priorities are without necessarily talking about the questions, but if that works for you, we've done that before, yeah.
And I'm looking at Mr. Crawford in the audience, because I know that he and I have discussed this at, in detail, but I do think that's fine, Mr. Thomas, if you want to develop the questions, they would however be a public record, and to the extent there was a request put in, that I know of no exemption or confidentiality that could be asserted, so, you know, if a candidate were to do that, that would be telling on the candidate, perhaps, you know, I think, I don't want to say much more than that, but I think my main goal here is to keep you all in the rails, and to make sure that whatever is done in this process, which is not something that you do on a routine basis, thank goodness, is, you know, we want to, you just want to make sure it's done, so what you've described is presenting a list of 15 questions.
Or more, yeah.
Or more, whatever you would recommend, and providing that to the board, then the board in open session, discussing amongst themselves, well, I'll take questions, you know.
Two, five.
Two, five, six, or I like this, or I like that, and then if there are additional questions that board members would want, they could bring those up in that open session.
So, that process.
That in mind, yeah, because we definitely don't want to surprise any of our candidates with, you know, questions that are not on that database of questions, because if we're discussing that on that Tuesday, right, we wouldn't want to bring any new questions at that point.
And I think for the process, I think you wouldn't want to do that.
And also, we don't want to give questions to one candidate and another candidate not get the same question, so we have to make sure that whatever we agree on.
That's why I think that's important.
We generally want you to ask the same questions, although that's not to say that a particular candidate has a response that may need further elaboration, or something in their background may mean I'm going to ask the candidate something different because of their background that varies from another candidate. We want to make sure you have a body of questions that you generally can make a fair comparison of your candidates. So let me, let me go back and try to land the plane, see if this makes sense. So as I say, you're going to get around 10 or 15 questions in that session. What I would suggest is I send to you as part of your briefing booklets, which will have their cover letters, their resumes, their first year, their questionnaire, all the material you've gotten, plus your, plus their first-year game plan, and each, I would give you a list of proposed questions that will probably be greater than that 12 to 15. What I normally ask my boards to do is saying, just circle your top 10 to 15 questions you would like to ask, and then normally what I'll do is just go by board member, all right, board member, you know, give me your, give me the numbers you've got, and I'll go board member to board member. That will then prioritize where you kind of land, without necessarily talking about the questions, it's a public document, but it's a way of getting through it a little quicker, and then from there, normally that'll get us typically, if you're like most of my clients, between eight to 10 questions where there's consensus, not necessarily unanimity, but consensus on it, and then from there, there'll be some other opportunities, say, I would like to ask the candidates a question about X or Y, we can kind of talk through and make sure they're worded, and then we can work that through to make sure you've got your 15 questions you're ready to go with.
And I'm, we're good with that, I think that that works from a public records and sunshine, or pardon me, sunshine standpoint, and then my anticipation would be that, once you all do that, that you assign the board member to ask that question for each candidate.
Yeah, yeah, we just normally make sure you're, and that's, that's part of getting you organized, so that you've kind of got, everybody knows kind of what the script is to work from there. And the last point is, I always ask my candidates, especially in Florida, because they're public meetings, to say, listen, if you're the first candidate versus the last candidate, we encourage them, it's a public meeting, I can't physically bar them from watching or being in a meeting, but I do ask them for professional courtesy, that if you were the first candidate, you really would like to, you know, not be at a disadvantage versus your last candidate, who's seen all the questions and all that ahead of time, so I'll do what I can within the parameters of what I, what I can ask.
Sure.
And I think that's just a matter of professional responsibility, given the position that you're interviewing for, yeah.
So we do have another opportunity, we could tackle that on April 8th, we do have a work session scheduled, or would you rather address it when we meet on April 15th?
Good point.
See what the eighth looks like here.
What time is the meeting on the eighth, Dr. Allen, is that at 9:00?
9:00 AM.
I may not be in town on the eighth. So my suspicion is it would probably be, it will probably be when we meet, at the beginning of the second day of the interview process.
Okay, neither way, if you gave us direction, we can list it as old business, and we can address it on the eighth, which questions we would like to select.
That's true, I.
We could do that.
With staff and with the attorney, we could try to do it that way and save some time.
If you need extra time, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, so that would be the eighth, then, okay.
But in any event, if we go with the 15th, we generally'd like to get the agendas done to comply with the APA seven days in advance, so that would be, you know, April 1 for the eighth, and April 8th for the 15th.
Once, once I get a draft schedule, now that I know I've got five candidates, I can start finalizing the schedule, I'll work with staff, one, the attorneys, and we'll, I can get you that schedule, once the schedule's in play, then that, you can do what you need for public advertising from there.
That's great.
That'll work out.
And we work with the superintendent and his staff to, we don't do that.
I understand.
Generally, we work in conjunction with the superintendent and his staff.
We'll figure that out with your staff, we'll get it together.
Right.
Okay.
So I had a question about the briefing information, I guess that's what you called it, with everybody's resume and all that, is it basically going to be a replicate of what we have now?
Parts of it, there'll be some additions to it. The pieces that you will not have are the first-year game plan, the written assessment, so that would be something we would add to you, the list of proposed questions, we may do that ahead of time, but we would have that in your briefing booklet as well, and then the PowerPoint that they would be doing for their kind of TED Talk, if you will, I don't normally have that ahead of time, I let them work on those, the candidates got a lot to do to get ready for these interviews or the background, I normally let them work on their PowerPoint up until the date at the start of the interview, and then I get it, work with your technology folks to make sure it'll all work out, that all the systems work out fine. We typically, in response to your question, okay, is we typically put all of that in one book, so you've got it all together, but you've seen pieces of that, you may have already made notes or highlighted their background, if you don't want to have their cover letters and their resumes and their questionnaire responses, we can just, we can just do an abbreviated piece to say, here's the first-year game plan, here's the list of proposed questions, those sort of things.
My sense is you should give every board member the same information.
I agree, so that was my question, do you want, do you, we would normally replicate what you've got now and add addition things to it, but if you, if you're like me, I keep all my notes on my previous candidates, I don't want to have to re-highlight them, so it's up to you if you would like their cover letters, resumes, and questionnaire responses as part of your briefing books ahead of time, as part of the next round or not.
I do, but I don't know what, I'm from the old school, and I know there are more folks that don't really want that, so I think it just depends on what each person wants, but I know I want it. I've already printed out most of it already, so.
How about we do this, I'll, I'll work with your staff, if, and then they can work with you, collect individually, if they, if you want a replication of what you've already been provided, it'll be there, if they don't, they can pull it out, and if you want to make a hard, they can make a hard copy, is that how, did the hard copies get made for you, did you make it yourself, or you deal with all electronically, or a little bit of everything?